Good morning, everyone. We're going to call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the Redevelopment Authority in the joint meeting of the School Board Trustees tonight. We have a real small agenda today, so we'll be in and out of here pretty quick. Today is Thursday, June 21st, 2018. It is 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street and also streaming on the Internet. And if you have cable, we're on the government access channel on cable. Can we have a roll call, please?
Morning Supervisor Bound, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwa, Supervisor Barrett, Mayor Crowe. You have a call.
Thank you very much, Sue. Could we call on our good friend, Pat Propster, Calvary Chapel. Morning, Pat. How are you doing?
Good morning, Mayor. How are you? I think it would be of waiting on the Lord, and that's the sum I want to bring to us this morning because I really appreciate coming to the Lord and waiting on Him is the very first thing that we do here because it's key to what we do in our life. "To you, O Lord, I lift up my soul. Oh, my God, I will trust in you. I will not be ashamed. Let not my enemies triumph over me." And here's the verse that I wanted to really bring to light this morning. "Indeed, no one who waits on the Lord will be ashamed. Let those who... let those be ashamed who deal treacherously without a cause. Show me your ways, O Lord; teach me your paths; lead me in your truth, and teach me; for you are the God of my salvation. On you I will wait all the day." Lord, I thank you this morning for us being able to come here and just addressing you, coming to you first thing, even as it says, "Each new day I look to you to be the director of our lives." So, Lord, I ask you that you be with the mayor with the board as they make decisions, as they lead this amazing city on into the future. Lord, we ask for your protection on this city as well as our country, Lord, for the firefighters that are out there, for the law enforcement, for the paramedics, and then, Lord, also for our armed forces that are brought, that keep us safe. So, Lord, be with them also. Lord, once again, for the decisions that will be made for our amazing city and this silver state, Lord, we ask for your blessings and your guidance. To you be all honor and glory, in the precious name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now on item number five, public comment. This is a time for anybody to comment on and discuss any topic that's relevant to or within the authority of this board this morning. We also take public comment where it's appropriate during the agenda items, and we take comment at the end, and we'll take at the beginning and the end of the same stuff with the Redevelopment Authority. Any members of the public want to address the board this morning? Anybody? I don't see anybody. Okay, well, so we'll just proceed here. Item six is possible approval of the minutes of May 7th and May 21st. Everybody had a chance to look at those. Let's take up May 17th first.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for May 17th, 2018, as presented.
There's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Think I got it.
The electronics is out.
I'll record it for you.
Recorder, I didn't see mine come up.
No, it didn't.
Well, you... Well, your vote didn't come up though, did it?
No.
She recorded.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right, now we got it. All right. Now you know, we're all up here with electronics this morning. I saw Pat Propster giving the invocation this morning. He's got the iPad, and I can't resist. I was wondering, you know, how would those who wrote the Bible think we're here with an iPad these days? That's interesting. Okay.
They had tablets.
They had tablets, yeah. They had tablets. All right, let's take up May 21st.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for May 21st, 2018, as presented.
There's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Okay, let's go to the agenda. We're gonna... I've got some things to pull off the consent agenda. Any member of the board want to pull anything off the main agenda? I don't see any. Okay, so, any member of the... We okay with the agenda as published then?
Special presentation next?
Yeah, we do. Hang on a minute. We're going to adopt the agenda as published then right now, and then we'll move to item number eight, special presentations. Chief Slaman, come on up. Chief, you guys have been busy here lately.
It has been a little busy. Sean Slaman, your fire chief. With me is Jen Budge, our Parks Director, and...
Leanne Keever, Chair.
Leanne Keever, Chair of the Parks Commission. We are in front of you again for the second time probably in the last few months for some great actions from our citizens and our Parks employees. We had another medical event at the MAC after a pretty aggressive game of pickleball, I believe it was. A gentleman went into cardiac arrest, a Park employee, and a couple citizens jumped straight into action and began CPR. And when fire crews showed up, we were able to convert the patient back to regular resuscitation, and he has survived this event. So, we wanted to recognize a couple of our community members as well as Parks employees for some great actions in stepping in and truly saving somebody's life today.
Very good.
So, if I could ask Daniel Cron, Parks employee, and then two citizens, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Manning and Mr. Jim Manning, too. Please come on up to the front.
Is Sean, then the microphones are working?
Okay. I'll just... All right. This is working down low. All right, well, kind of... Apparently our microphones aren't working, so yours was.
Yeah, that one was. So, first of all, I wanted to say on behalf of the Fire Department and certainly on behalf of the City of Carson City, thank you to all of you for stepping up. What the actions that you did truly saved a man's life. And as we know, witness-based CPR almost doubles your chance of survivability. So, in this case, it was a witnessed event, and you were trained and jumped into action right away, and because of those great actions, the gentleman is alive today. So, without your actions, without your previous training, we may not have had the same results. So, we wanted to say thank you and recognize each of you for that. Jim? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Thank you.
Mayor, I will turn that back over to you if you have a few comments.
Well, yeah, on behalf of a grateful board and a grateful community, thanks to all of you folks for stepping in on such a lifesaving event. You know, I think that says a whole lot about who we are as a community here. I mean, I know our civilian ones, as well as our city employees, you know, it's just remarkable that, you know, no matter where you go in this community, you can find somebody who's going to be able to help you out on things, particularly when things get going a little tough like it does when somebody's near dying. That was wonderful for you guys to just jump in there. Many thanks to you from all of us up here at the board and all you in the grateful community, and keep up the good work, guys. Good to see you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Chief, while you're up there, I know, just tell... Give us a little run, a quick rundown on what you guys have been doing here lately because there's been a lot on your plate that I think you're here, so just take a moment during comment period to talk to us.
Certainly. Well, thank you again, Sean Slaman, your fire chief. Last Tuesday, we had a fire event in the Voltaire Canyon area. Ended up starting a little around, a little bit after 7:00 p.m., and because of the late night hours, we weren't able to get aircraft on the fire initially. Most of the wildland firefighting aircraft do not fly at night, so it created a little bit of a challenge. It was fairly high up in Voltaire Canyon, and the fire spread pretty rapidly for this time of year. While most of... While some of our hills are still green, they're browning very quickly. This area was... Had dried out fairly quickly already, and we had pretty aggressive fire behavior for this time of year. Ultimately, the fire burned a little over 500 acres, 517 acres. It started on U.S. Forest Service lands, spread into some BLM property, and then ultimately into a small portion of Carson City property. Due to great teamwork and mutual aid agreements that were already in place, we were able to put a significant amount of firefighters onto the fire fairly quickly. They had to hike into most of those areas, and we were able to start cutting lines and putting some fire attack on the fire. Even through the middle of the night, which is normally a time when the fire dies down, we had extremely aggressive fire behavior. But crews were able to stop it, and by the next morning, a good portion of the fire had been knocked down. Crews remained on scene a little over three days, ensuring that the hot spots were mopped up and everything. But that was a fairly significant event, and again, I want to express my appreciation to all of our partner fire agencies from the Forest Service to BLM to NDF as well as all of the local agencies. We had just about every local fire department represented from northern Nevada at this fire, from Reno to Sparks down to East Fork and Tahoe Douglas. And so, it was definitely a great team effort, and it was an early-season warning for what this year can be. As of now, we still have a couple crew... We have one engine and several personnel at the Smith Fire down in Smith Valley, and that is starting to wrap up, but they were a little concerned over the winds the last couple days. But so, fire season has started with a bang, and hopefully, hopefully it dies down after this, but it's going to be a busy year.
Well, thank you, Chief, and thanks to all of your folks, and thanks to our surrounding jurisdictions for weighing in to help us fight that fire. I mean, you know, when you look at what our troops have to do to get up on that mountain up on Voltaire Canyon, you know, with no air support, that was really remarkable, their fire tending. That was well done.
Yeah, it was pretty impressive.
Pass on all our thanks. I mean, it really could have taken out.
Yeah.
I mean, it was even... I thought it kind of more serious than even the one we had before where it went right down to the edges there because this was moving pretty good.
Yeah, this was a larger fire and burning a little bit faster. I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention, we had a lot of help from other city departments, Public Works, and the Sheriff's Office specifically. We had some voluntary evacuations, also used the water tender and as well as our communications, our dispatch center. So, we had a lot of help locally, internally as well.
Good. Thanks, Chief.
You bet.
All right. All right. Well, to take up the consent agenda, I've been asked to pull items 12A, 12B, and 9A. Anybody else, any member of the public want anything pulled besides what I just told you, 12A, 12B, and 9A? We okay? Board, we okay with that? All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 12A, 12B, and 9A.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of item 9B for the assessor, 10A for the city manager, and 11A for finance.
Second.
There's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you. All right, let's take up item... Matters moved for the consent agenda, let's take up item 9A first. This is Assessor Dolly. Dave, you want to tell us what's going on here and why you wanted to talk a little bit about it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave Dolly, Carson City Assessor. I apologize, I have another form. Every time I want to make sure I hit all these specific items, I have to write it out beforehand, so I apologize if I'm going to be reading this. The Carson City Assessor's Office were responsible for the discovery and the billing of personal property taxes. When we talk about personal property taxes, we're talking about mobile home taxes, aircraft taxes, farm equipment, commercial business taxes, and port of hangars. Each year, the Department of Taxation completes a study. They ask all of the assessor's offices in the state to provide them with cost, what costs are associated with the actual collection of the personal property. These costs they're looking at are the printing of the forms, the printing of the envelopes, mailing costs, payment processing costs, staff time, cost of processing liens and judgments, and even the utility costs that are associated with this. Each year, this study determines what the minimum amount of the tax is going to be for personal property. For the past few years, that amount has been $12. So, if it's $12.01, we have to tax it, we have to bill it, we have to go through the process of trying to collect all the taxes on it. Real... Our personal property taxes are much different than real property taxes. Real property taxes are stable. They're stuck. They're there. They're not movable. Personal property can move. So, unlike real property where a real property has four years in which we can collect the personal property taxes, if the taxes for... I'm sorry, real property taxes, if the personal property taxes become delinquent in one year, we have to at that point work with the owner to collect those taxes. We use many different methods of collecting taxes. So, each time an installment is delinquent, we send out a notice. We use the assistance of the District Attorney's Office. They send out demand letters. Code enforcement has also been very great in helping us because they actually go out and talk to the delinquent owners. There is a code which says that all of the city accounts have to be kept current, and if they're not current, then the business license will not be renewed. And so, you guys were awesome and did that a few years back. It's unbelievable the amount of staff time that it takes us to collect these taxes, and a lot of the taxes, the personal property taxes, are the same people over and over and over again. So, if it's $12, you can imagine that the cost to the city to collect these taxes is much greater than if we were to just write it off. But unfortunately, we do not have the ability to write it off, and so, we have to use every measure that we can to actually collect these taxes. We do work with taxpayers to make payments, but as you know, in the past, I mean, we worked with a particular business owner a few years ago. We worked with them for many, many years, and unfortunately, they ended up going out of business, and they owed the city a couple thousand dollars' worth of taxes. So, we're kind of walking a fine line as far as, you know, how, when we get tough with people and when we don't get tough with people. I guess I kind of wanted to show you that we don't... You know, we work very hard. My staff, and they proved it again this morning, they're probably the best staff in the city. They really do care about the taxpayers and the residents of Carson City. They lose sleep at night because of trying to go after them to collect these property taxes. It's not a fun job, but they do an awesome job at it, and they're really great. So, I guess, all that being said, I apologize, long-winded, we are requesting that you write off these eight accounts that are on the staff report for, I believe it's $250 from 2015 because we really have tried and expended all of our efforts to try and collect these taxes.
Thank you, Dave. Never a pleasant job sitting in your chair. There's only one probably worse than that, sitting in these chairs, but that's all right. But no, I think we all understand, you know, it's one of those things about, you know, you deal with the public all the time, and you're dealing with the taxes, and, you know, those are issues to people. Most definitely, most definitely. Okay, all right. All right, so, let's entertain a motion to approve the removal of the taxes and penalties from the unsecured rule. Do you want to try that one?
I move to approve the removal of the taxes and penalties from the unsecured 2015-16 tax rule for the following unsecured accounts. CB49042, On-the-Go Scooter Mobile. CB45994, Chiefs Tactical. CB45026, Distinctive Style Beauty Salon. CB44953, Auto Doctors. CB44244, Mayville Recycling Center. CB43670, Robi Brianna. CB35767, Puppy Love Dog Grooming. CL45196, Spectrum Management LLC. SpecNV997, for a total amount of $265.77.
There's a mo... There's a... Excuse me. There's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Dave. Thanks again to your staff. All right, let's take up the other ones we pulled. Let's take up 12A. We need to do some corrections. Who's got this? Carol, Ms. Akers? Come on up. Both, both of you here. Here we go. All right. Good morning. Set the stage for us. Tell us, lead in for what we're doing here on this, on 12A.
Okay, so, this is to approve amendment number two to contract number 1415-158 with Diamond Pharmacy, providing an extension until September 30th, 2018 for an amount not to exceed $27,500 to provide prescription medications for persons detained in the Carson City Jail.
Okay. There were some problems with some dates, I think, or something going on here. Supervisor Bonkowski.
If I could, Mayor.
Eagle Eye over here.
I asked to pull this just because of a technical issue. The original contract term and all of the option terms are... Have expired or will be expiring at the end of this month, so I just wanted to put on the record that Diamond Pharmacy doesn't have the ability to extend this contract, and it's the city that's requesting the extension in order to negotiate a new and better contract. I also wanted to put on the record that this action will be appropriating $27,500 of the approved fiscal year 1819 budget, which has already been approved as part of the full budget. So, we're just appropriating a portion of an already approved budget line item to take care of this while we negotiate the contract.
Any other questions? Public comment? Motion's in order. Go ahead.
I move to approve amendment number two to contract number 1415-158 with Diamond Pharmacy, providing an extension to the original contract term plus all approved extension option periods to September 30th, 2018, and appropriating up to $27,500 of the approved fiscal year 2018-19 budget line item for this contract to provide prescription medication for persons detained in the Carson City Jail.
Second.
There's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. All right, thank you, Brad, for that one, and let's take up 12B. This is... Carol, I'll put this out. This is approved, considered, the approval of contract 1819-005 with the Carson City Water Resources Support and Resource... The contract with Resource Concepts Inc. for a two-year contract for an annual amount not to exceed $50,000 to be funded from the water fund of the Public Works Department. Got a couple of questions. Supervisor Bonkowski, go.
Sorry, I pulled this one to just another technicality, and I talked to Carol about this to go forward, that we include the full contract amount in the motions in the staff report. So, in this particular item, the staff report says we're approving $50,000. That's the annual amount. It's a two-year contract, so the full contract amount that we're approving, dollar amount, is $100,000.
Everybody okay? Carol, I know you... You're on that, all right. Public comment, anybody? I don't see any. Good catch, all right. Supervisor Bonkowski, you want to make a motion? Thank you.
I move to approve contract number 1819-005, Carson City Water Resources Support with Resource Concepts Inc. as a two-year contract for an annual amount not to exceed $50,000 and a total contract amount not to exceed $100,000 to be funded from the water fund of the Public Works Department.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you very much, and thanks, everybody, for catching these items on the consent agenda. All right, let's take up item 14, Public Guardian. Deborah here? Anybody here from the Public Guardian's office? I know she's retiring.
Do you want to defer it, and then we'll come back to the second?
Well, we're going to have to. I mean, I'm more concerned about if she's okay. All right.
Okay, we'll find out.
All right, we'll just kind of hold this in abeyance for a while and see what's going on there. All right, let's take up item 15. This is potential reorganization of some things going out the Fire Department. Chief Slaman, second time this morning. Tell us what's going on here.
Good morning again, Mayor. Sean Slaman, your fire chief. We are recommending a minor reorganization within the administrative staff of the Fire Department. This move, we believe, will make us... Will put us in a better position for our future. Their recommendation is that we are to add a emergency medical services manager. Currently, that position is overseen by a battalion chief who is retiring in three more weeks. And looking at emergency medical services, it's about 80%, 85% of our total call volume. It is a significant portion of what we do, and as well as we are the primary transport provider for all medical care in Carson City. So, what we really need is somebody that is... That has special knowledge and experience into that area, and it's not always a position where you can train and develop somebody into. There are a lot of moving parts with EMS. Certainly, the future of medical care and health care is constantly changing, and we need somebody that is on top of that. So, we... I feel that the best move for the organization would be to add a professional into that position, emergency medical services manager. The battalion chief, when he retires, he will be replaced with an existing battalion chief, and we will move them over to oversee our emergency management division as well as some other administrative positions. Ultimately, the elimination of the current deputy city emergency manager position and the addition of the EMS manager, they are the same pay scale, so there are no increased costs, there are no increased FTEs to this with that, and I think it puts us in a better position long-term for the organization to be prepared for future challenges.
Board? Go.
So, if I could just... A little bit of clarification. So, what you're indicating is that you think changing the medical position will provide better service to the community in that chain?
Part of it would be improved services as well as looking at future services and partnerships, community paramedicine, which is a big net, but partnering possibly with our hospital and looking to help our citizens so that they don't... One of the biggest challenges medically right now is that parent patients that are discharged from the hospital aren't always able to follow all of their follow-ups, and they get readmitted. That's a big strain on the medical system as well as increased costs. There are a lot of partnership models out there, and that's something that I think we need to look at in our future, and this position would help us with that.
Better service.
Yes, absolutely.
You've also been talking to the hospital on this stuff.
We have. We've had several conversations with the hospital over the last several months in general terms, not working on specific plans as of yet, but that will be one of the first objectives.
All right, all right. Anything else, board, before I go to public? Public comment? I don't see any. Looks like you may have avoided a bullet. All right, motions in order.
Make a motion. I move to approve the minor reorganization of the Fire Department's administration, which includes the addition of one emergency medical services manager position and the elimination of the existing deputy emergency manager position.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Thanks again, Chief. Okay, I see Deborah came in. Deborah, you ready for... To do a report today, or you want to wait till next agenda item?
I'm ready.
You ready?
Yeah.
All right, then we'll move back to your item here on the report from the Public Guardian. Come on.
We were faster than she thought.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce, this is my deputy, Nicole Wengren.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning.
She's going to be giving the report today. I'm just going to give you some... As you know, this is my last board supervisors meeting and giving my report. I have had an amazing experience working with my clients for the past seven and a half years, and I thank you for the opportunity. Okay. You can go.
Nicole Wengren, Deputy Guardian for the Public Guardian's Office. office. So I'm here just to give a little report about what's been going on in our office for the last couple of months. We have received three new clients since the report was prepared through the end of May, and have several more pending at this time. We are having, still having little, some challenges with the new attorneys that are being appointed with our clients, but we're learning to work through the issues and learning the new laws in our office. We are working with the judges to utilize other attorneys that are more familiar with the process of guardianship and working with people with dementia and mental health issues, so we're looking forward to that. At this time, we, there's three employees in our office. We have about thirty-six cases per the guardian and myself. We don't have any interns at this time, and we have approximately five referrals per quarter. We have thirty-six protected persons in skilled nursing, thirteen in assisted living, seven that are in their own home, five that are placed in group homes, seven that are in out-of-state placements. We have eight cases that are currently deceased but not closed, three pending cases, zero dropped cases, and three that are currently at the hospital or behavioral health, not placed. We have collected, from March of two thousand eighteen to May of two thousand eighteen, approximately sixteen thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars in fees, and we have about fifty-one clients who are either on Medicaid or Medicaid pending.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you talk to me a little bit about the people that are in their own home, what the difference is of the service that the actual, that the public guardian has to provide for those that remain in their home? What type of cases are you able to handle and?
So the clients that we have at home are either at the motel, in motels, or at home. We have outside services coming in to help care for them. We still do our duty of visiting with them, making sure medical appointments are set up for them, paying all their financial bills, making sure they get their monthly allowance each month. We just, our job is to, the least restrictive environment. So if they're able to remain at home, that's our, our first priority, so.
But you actually have to do a visit, then?
Yes.
That's what I was.
And most of these clients come into our office on a regular basis as well, so.
Other board questions? Public comment on this? Well, Deborah, it's your last board meeting. You know, you, you work in an area that is, to say the least, difficult, because you're dealing with people's money, you're dealing with elderly folks, and you're dealing with, you know, elderly folks who may not have the capability to make their financial decisions or health decisions any longer. It's not, it's not an easy job for anybody, but, you know, we all go through this, is, you know, at some point in time, dealing with the elder population, and, you know, we just want to say thank you. I know, you know, sometimes you don't get enough thanks for taking care of these folks, but it, it's a big deal for our community, so for your last seven and a half years, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, board? All right. Motion? No, go. Okay, no action. Thank you, Nicole. All right, keep that. All right. Let's take up item sixteen. This is a potential two-year contract with Serenity Mental Health and Carson City Juvenile Services. We've got them all again. Okay, Carol, Ally, Doc, judges want to come up too? Come on. I'm just kidding.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts. This is to approve contract eighteen nineteen dash zero one five for, as a two-year contract between Serenity Mental Health and the Carson City Juvenile Services Department, probation and detention, for mental health and substance abuse services effective July first, two thousand eighteen through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty, for an annual amount of ninety thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
This is budgeted? First year's budgeted?
It is budgeted for eighteen, fiscal year eighteen.
Okay. Yep. Eighteen nineteen. Ally, you want to do it, or you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I've also.
Good morning, Ally.
Good morning. How are you? I've also brought Dr. Joe McKellister with me today. He's played a huge role in our mental health community. He has come up with creative solutions to help make a difference in our community with our mental health adults. He's helped create the FAST program, been a huge player in the mental health court, and he's also a fellow, fellow commissioner of mine on the state mental health commission. So with that being said, I would like to just discuss what, how we got here today and the contract that we do have in place. And I apologize, I have it all written down, because I don't want to miss anything, so.
Don't worry about it.
Carson City Juvenile Services has actually been very fortunate in the last couple of years to receive free mental health services in order to provide treatment for our youth in our community. This has prevented us from requesting funds through the city. The first free service received has been through the school district, through Title One D grant, which has provided a marriage and family counselor for our detention center. The counselor is utilized for de-escalation suicidal youth and counseling. This does not include after-hours calls or crisis intervention. Unfortunately, this funding has been reduced through the Title One D grant, and what is allocated to juvenile services is now being put towards education for our detention center. Rural Clinics has also provided additional mental health and counseling for our out-of-cust youth. They have helped facilitate and create the juvenile justice assessment triage team, the JAS program, within our community, and this is a diversion program used for out-of-cust youth to prevent youth from entering into the system and into appropriate services. Three years ago, Rural Clinics agreed to dedicate one of their current employees to help facilitate the program. They agreed to provide services until we could sustain services on our own for no more than two to three years, and we are currently in our third year, and that contract ends June thirtieth. In addition, Rural Clinics has provided a counselor to facilitate groups at no cost, which has been a huge help to our probation department. Unfortunately, the school district and Rural Clinic services are going to be no longer available. In the last two thousand seventeen legislative session, Carson City Juvenile Services was granted ninety-eight thousand two hundred and eighty dollars through Assembly Bill three ninety-five to provide mental health services to youth involved in Carson City Juvenile Services. The reason we are granted this amount from the state is due to the cost of evaluations, mental health evals, drug and alcohol evaluations, and psychiatric evals required by residential treatment centers, along with needed services in detention and probation. We are required to spend this money by September of two thousand and nineteen. The funding will allow us to provide a clinician in our detention facility, as well as in our probation department. It's important to understand that youth who are detained are suicidal, which takes an extended amount of time to handle. A counselor may be there for, for several hours before the youth de-escalates enough to be safe enough to remove, or put back into their cell. Unfortunately, in our detention facility, this is a weekly occurrence. With this being said, Carson City Juvenile Services will be able to appropriately fund this mental health service until September two thousand nineteen with the AB three ninety-five money. In addition, there are several current NRSs that mandate mental health services for juveniles involved in the juvenile justice system. The first one being NRS sixty-two C oh three five, which mandates that once a child is brought into custody, they must be screened to determine whether the child is in need of mental health services or is an abuser of drugs and alcohol. NRS sixty-two C oh six oh mandates that each child involved in an offense involving a firearm must be evaluated by a qualified professional, and fortunately, we've had a lot of those issues lately with youth and firearms. NRS sixty-two E two eighty mandates that the juvenile court may order medical, psychiatric, psychological, and other care or treatment as deemed to be in the best interest of the child in the, in the community. NRS sixty-two E six twenty mandates that when a child commits an, an act involving a controlled substance, the juvenile court shall order a delinquent child to undergo an evaluation to determine whether the child is an abuser of drugs and alcohol. Sorry. Come through. Okay. Lastly, during the last legislative session, AB one eighty and four seventy-two passed. These two bills mandate certain services detention centers must provide for the state of Nevada. One of the services required is mental health screening for youth in detention facilities. AB one eighty is in, or in AB one eighty, the detention center's responsibility, it is to provide medical and behavioral health care, including mental health services, psychological screening and assessment and testing. Per AB four seventy-two, the expense for these evaluations will shift from the state to each department of juvenile services over the next two years. With the school district and rural clinic support, we've managed to provide these services with no additional cost to the city. However, from September two thousand nineteen forward, after we use AB three ninety-five money, we will no longer be able to provide these mandated services without the city's help. Serenity Mental Health has offered to provide their professional services through a contract which addresses every mandated need that Carson City Juvenile probation needs. This contract is proposed to start July of two thousand eighteen and extend through June of two thousand twenty, if approved by you. Serenity Mental Health has agreed to conduct suicide assessments, suicide de-escalation as needed, level of care assessments, mental health evaluation, and also cover additional groups for our youth that are suffering from mental health condition, as well as their parents. They will also be covering the probation side and help facilitate the juvenile justice assessment triage program, meet with the juvenile, meet with a probation officer, provide a case plan, and also provide co-occurring counseling for those youth, as well as the parents, and in-home mental health counseling through home visits. Carson City Juvenile Services has agreed to pay a total of ninety dollars per hour per the terms of this agreement, or until the grant money has run out. As Serenity is a Medicaid provider, the company shall attempt to collect Medicaid reimbursement when possible. With Medicaid reimbursement, it, Carson City, if they're, if they're unable to collect Medicaid reimbursement, Carson City will be responsible. By collecting Medicaid, this has a potential to save Carson City a lot of money for the future. Lastly, Serenity and Carson City shall have the right to terminate the agreement without cause. In conclusion, it is best practice, in line with other juvenile justice agencies and mandated by NRS, to provide mental health services, as seventy-five percent of the justice-involved youth suffer from a mental health condition. When youth are booked into our facility, they're required by NRS to complete a MACI assessment, which screens for suicidal ideation. Last year, several of our intake population in detention scored in the moderate-to-high category for depressed mood or suicidal ideation. Both of these categories would trigger a mental health evaluation and possible admittance to a higher level of care, such as West Hills Hospital. However, it is common for West Hills Hospital to recently be at capacity and unable to accept the juveniles into their facility. Therefore, they remain in detention when they should be, in fact, hospitalized, causing an increased risk in our facility. In two thousand seventeen, forty-four youth needed mental health services in Carson Detention, but could not get services in a timely manner, resulting in increased incidents in our detention. It is predicted that this matter will likely double in two thousand eighteen, if adequate services are not provided to these youth. In conclusion, with this two-year contract, Carson City Juvenile probation would be able to facilitate services at no cost to families, which would promote positive outcomes, reduce recidivism on the front end, and decrease use, and decrease the risk of tragedy and crisis within our detention facility. The goal of this contract is to assist youth and families of Carson City and integrate effective therapeutic interventions. With this contract, Carson City Juvenile probation feels that it can make an impact on the youth's future and overall quality and safety of our community. So with that being said, I'd, I'd really like to turn it over to Doc Joe, just for a couple of comments.
Doc Joe, good to see you here.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Joe McKellister. I think some of you know me well, and some of you probably don't know me at all, so just briefly, I'm a forensic psychologist in private practice in Carson City. In two thousand one, I took a contract to become the director of forensic health services for the Carson City Jail, where I remain. Couple of years later, Douglas County retained me in the same position. In two thousand five, I formulated with Judge Tatro, the mental health court, and I remained the consultant on that court. And in two thousand thirteen, as Ally mentioned, we started the forensic assessment services triage team, which was a new model of service delivery, where we brought in the community of providers to the jail, and formulated kind of working groups with all the different diversion programs within the city, drug court, mental health court, the most team. And that FAST program now is expanded to four different counties in rural Nevada, and a fifth is online to open up their FAST program. My point in all of that, though, is the importance of highlighting the need for diversion, and these practices that I mentioned to you are not new. They really follow a national best practice model for delivering service when the mental health population of our communities intersect with law enforcement. Just to be clear, I'm not going to benefit from this in any direct way. I just don't want Ally's graduating class to become my freshman class at the jail, so in that way, I hope to benefit. Just historically, back in the nineties, to understand this mental health piece and juvenile justice, in the nineties, there was a spate of rather vicious homicides nationally with juvenile offenders. The rate of incarceration went up, these violent crimes are not very well understood, and so the, the best practice at that point was public safety. That was sort of the mantra. So that issue dissipated for reasons not completely unknown, and as did the rate of juvenile arrests and incarcerations over time. I was at a conference back in the early two thousands, and the presenter was asked, "Give me your top three priorities for the juvenile justice system," and he said, "Mental health." Mental health and mental health. And that became the new mantra. By the time of the early two thousands, the research on juvenile offending and mental health was much more clear, and it demonstrated that seventy percent of an incarcerated youth population has a diagnos- a diagnosable mental health disorder. And in that group, well, let's, if you got seventy percent in that group, what about the general population? Only twenty percent of the general population would exhibit anything like that. So you have a threefold increase in diagnosed disorders in our juvenile offenders. And in that group, the problem sort of increases, because if you take that group out, that's seventy percent out, nearly eighty percent have a dual diagnosis. So that means that there's two disorders at a minimum going on. So a common one would be bipolar disorder with alcohol dependence, right? So you've got two discrete, two distinctive disorders. So now you've just upped the ante in terms of risk, in terms of treatment complexity. And out of that group, sixty percent have three or more diagnosable disorders, further increasing the problems and the barriers to success if they're not addressed appropriately. So I guess I'm here to really try to highlight the, the risks that Ally faces without this kind of intervention, and the need for the intervention, because you can see the disparity between the youth and the general population and those that we are incarcerating. And diversion has become the way of doing that. And so if, if it means anything, I'm, I'm here to support you and your efforts, and she's really done a fantastic job. So, thank you for your time.
Subhas Raybott.
First of all, I understand the wisdom and the need for this, and I guess, I heard a statistic the other day that was very disturbing, and that is youth suicide in females, the rates is up significantly. And I don't know, Doc Joe, if you can address that, Ally, if you can address that, if you understand why.
I don't personally know, but I would say an opinion would be due to increased mental health issues, as well as substance abuse on top of that.
We have also noticed, Dr. Joe McKellister, for the record, we've also noticed a huge increase in our female population in the jail. And what we know nationally about that population is the tremendous impact of trauma that exists in this group. So somewhere to eighty, ninety, eighty to ninety percent of females incarcerated in prisons have a trauma history, and that's not too far off from the males, which often go overlooked, somewhere between seventy and eighty percent. So I think that's, a big part of this is that unseen trauma history in our female youth, and it's led to kind of a new treatment strategy, or a theology, or a theory called trauma-informed care. So it's become so nationalized and understood, it's actually now being captured in that nomenclature. So I suspect trauma's a big piece of it, as well as substance abuse.
All the more reason to fund this. Thank you.
Okay, so first, I really want to thank, Ally had a, a training session where they brought someone in nationally, and so I did spend a few hours trying to really learn best practice models that were going around nationally and things, and it was a, probably the most interesting takeaway I had from that was that children's, young people's brains really don't mature till like age thirty. And so I think that was astonishing to me, to, to recognize if we don't try to provide the assistance when they're ten, twelve, you know, early, then it's just the dominos, like you said, just keep falling. And so that was, thank you for inviting us to attend, and I, I really did enjoy that. There's just a couple technical issues on the contract, and I think we've probably worked them out, and it may be, if you look on Exhibit A, I think you guys are aware, I think I sent a notice out there, but maybe in our motion or something, we can just have the DA's office conform the changes correctly, so they read for the right dates. DA's office conform the changes correctly so they read for the right dates and the right dollar amounts for the biennium. So I just kind of want to put that on the record. Maybe I'll just, in the motion, add, no problem with that? Okay, thank you.
I apologize for that. That was a little, there was a little bit of confusion on everybody's end because the state's budget goes from September to September and ours is obviously, you know.
Hi, everybody. So I also had a couple of notes on Exhibit A, so I do have a copy that we can use for the recorder if we need to. I did have a question on Exhibit A, Ally. There's a statement in here, and this is the scope of work for Serenity. On the fifth line down, it talks about level of care assessment as needed, mental health evaluations as needed, and between three and 18 hours of mental health counseling therapy per week as needed to the inmates of the juvenile detention center. To me, that's a huge range. My question is, why would the language not be changed to up to 18 hours? Because if we're, like, this is the scope of work, so why would Serenity provide more than three hours if the range is a minimum of three and up to 18?
And I'm good with that language change. The reason why we've capped it at 18 was because that was what the grant was going to allow us to fund for the year.
Right, and I have no problem with the cap. It just seems like that's a really big range, and it just removes any motivation to provide services once you meet that minimum.
I agree. I think it would be fine to just switch it for up to 18 hours. I think the reason why we put three in there is because that's the absolute minimum that they would spend in our facility evaluating youth.
Can I clarify again? Because if you, I just want to clarify something there, because if you change it to up to 18, that means they can spend 10 minutes. So did you want to require a three-hour minimum? Do you see what I'm saying here? If you change that verbiage to up to 18, then you're guaranteed one minute. Was the objective, or should it just be, I'm wondering if that needs to be in there, whether you would rather change it to something like an approved case plan? Because maybe somebody needs 20 and somebody needs two. Do you really want to put the time in here at all, or would it be better that you approve the case plan? Because I hate to take away the minimums, and they go, "Great, 10 minutes." I don't know. I'd rather give you maximum flexibility to manage the contract and meet the needs of the client, if I can.
I think that either way, we're okay, just as long as we know that they're not going to go over 18 hours. So either, we're good with either way. I just want to ensure that we're not going over that $98,000 in this next fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, maybe again, what we can do, I'm just thinking out loud, maybe the DA will have to chime in a little bit, is that we could overall approve the contract, and then some of the finite conforming changes in Exhibit A could be worked out with the DA's office to again just clearly identify the scope. Because I think that's what both Brad and I are interested in, is getting a scope that's very workable for you, but not having questions come up three months into the contract and everybody's wondering what it is. Would that, could we do that in our motion, indicate that the DA's office could conform?
I think that would be appropriate under the circumstances. I'd be happy to work with Ally personally and also with the vendor as well to come up with the appropriate parameters.
Yeah, because, perfect.
I would say for the record, though, that if we're talking about specific measures, for example, we're talking about a floor and a ceiling that's going to be established, you know, I certainly don't want to come up with a policy decision that's going to override the intent of this body. So if we can avoid that and allow the flexibility, as you just stated on the record, I'm happy to work with Ally and we'll come up with, you know, those adjustments to the scope. That would be in accordance with the intent of this body.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, baby. Then my other question, which is, I think, a more critical issue, Serenity will be a new vendor, and for the fiscal year 19, we don't have an identified funding source. So my question is, why would we not approve a one-year contract with Serenity and bring this back next year to evaluate the service provided by Serenity and then make a decision on extending the contract and trying to identify either an alternative funding source or bringing money forward from the general fund to fund it for fiscal year 19?
I think the only way I can answer that is when we met with the previous city manager, he suggested that we extend a two-year contract in order to retain that person or that company for an extended period of time instead of just doing a one-year contract.
My question would be, what if you don't want to retain them then?
Then we have the language of the right to terminate at any time.
Can I follow up, though, a little bit on what Supervisor Bonkowski was talking about there? Because one of my issues on doing the two years, you probably need that long to have a true evaluation period, so I'm really not concerned about that, but the first year's funding is coming from the legislature. And my question really, and has a non-supplant clause in the legislation. So my question really goes, is a report due back to the legislature on the use of the money, the success of the money, whether or not it, and would they potentially be giving us another allocation of dollars? And then if there was a non-supplant clause in that, if I allocate the $98,000 for the second contract year, I wouldn't be able to avail myself of the money. So I think it's not that I don't want to, again, is a conforming change or a possibility, we could change this to a one-year with an option to renew? Because that way, if this money comes from the legislature on another bill to fund some more, we wouldn't be supplanting.
That's kind of where I was headed with this, too.
So you'd still have the option to go ahead and say, "They're a great vendor and we'll automatically renew," without coming back here, but that way we can avail ourselves of potential funding sources.
Sure, that would be fine. I just-
We're trying to help you.
No, I understand. I do believe that, well, first off, no, there, so far, there hasn't been any indication that we're going to have to report on this money. However, it does need to be used specifically for what they gave it to us for, which we requested. And in regards to your second question, I don't think that it's going to be renewed, at least what it's, how it's been interpreted to me, is this is a one-time funding that will not renew next session.
Is there still any downside, though, to a one-year contract with a one-year option?
As long as we have the language that it's a one-year option, that would be fine.
Okay, because that would be my preference.
As is often the case, my colleagues have done a great job of nailing these things down there very detail-oriented, and so am I, but I'm also one of those people who's observed government almost all my life. And can you enlighten me in broader terms or greater detail regarding why this is a one-time? What happens is in government, the federal government says the states have to do this and then doesn't provide the money or doesn't provide the money for long. Same thing happens to local governments from state governments. Was there a broader reason that was given that, "Well, we see this as a need," and you cited several statutes in your testimony, "yet we're only going to start this and then leave it to somebody else?"
So to give you a little history on that, the way AB 395 came about and the funding for that was, several years back, we submitted a request to the Supreme Court, to Justice Hardisty, for our, basically, our want list or wish list of things that we really felt were going to benefit in our community. Somehow, it manifested to turn up in AB 395. So that is the history of it in regards to that.
Given what I used to do, I go to the word somehow and say, "Somehow, how?" I just, I don't understand a process where a government at one level determines that something is necessary, but then says, "After that, we wash our hands of it." Sounds like a Pontius Pilate move to me.
I can't answer for them. However, I do believe that each city was allotted, or each county was allotted a certain amount of money with the hopes that the city would fund whatever they're asking for as years later come on.
Good guess, I think.
City manager, how do we deal with issues where we have a contract that extends beyond our funding, our current budget? I mean, how do we normally do that? Or is it done?
Well, we would just keep it for-
I mean, usually where you do these contracts, multi-year contracts, you've got to not exceed, and there's an actual program that you're going to do and complete. Here, we're taking a service item and making that, saying, essentially what we're saying is we're going to make that a permanent position then, sort of a permanent position, is what's going on here.
Well, what we would do is just, is make sure that we include it in the fiscal '20 budget, and I think it would be a one-time thing, and then I think they would have to do a supplemental request to carry it on after that.
And do we do these things where we make a budget decision today for a two-year down the road in contracts like this?
We have, it doesn't happen very often where the funding is not in there initially, just like with the prior item, there was, I think it was water resource, that was a $50,000 a year for two years. Those amounts are already built into their budgets, you know, each year, so it's an ongoing thing. This is different because we're going to have to come up with a $98,000 amount to budget for this. And I think the agreement does have the non-appropriation clause also.
Yeah, okay. All right. Hold a comment? Anybody?
Just want to make sure that Judge Wilson doesn't want to talk. He did show up today for this item.
Oh, the third branch of government's here, man. Morning, Judge.
Supervisor, good morning. Judge Russell was here earlier. He wasn't able to stay, but I'm authorized to speak for both of us this morning. Ally and Dr. Joe have done a good job of explaining why this is necessary in addition to the statute saying it's required. It's necessary, though, and I'm just using some different words than what they have used. We see this ultimately as a public safety issue, which affects the quality of life of everyone that lives in Carson City. If we don't catch these mental health issues when the children are brought to our attention through delinquent acts and are incarcerated in juvenile detention, then Judge Russell and I, or whoever the judges in the future are, are going to be dealing with them on a much more serious and a much more costly level. It's necessary because the city is exposed to tremendous liability if we do not provide timely, consistent, quality mental health care to the youth that are in the juvenile process. And we owe a responsibility to the children themselves, and these are children. We refer to them as juveniles and youth. These are children. So it's necessary for those reasons. Judge Russell and I are very grateful to Ally and all the work that she has done in putting this together. We have met several times. The former city manager was, my recollection was, it was his instigation, the two-year contract. And there is some benefit to consistency. I don't know if Serenity agreed to this, understanding that it was a two-year contract, and if it's not a two-year contract, what effect that might have on them. Financially, we think we're stuck with it. We being Carson City. We have to fund it. That's not an option. So the question is, the best way to do it? Judge Russell and I both believe that this is the best option, the two years, with the provision that they can opt out. If juvenile is not happy with the services that they're being provided, they can opt out of it. The quality of care, again, the consistency, the timeliness of it are all important. So we're in favor of approving the two-year contract.
So it sounds to me like you'd be in favor. Following logically from what you said, Judge, you're really saying that rather than a contract, you think a permanent employee dealing with this, as a city employee, is going to be required?
You know, that idea was discussed some. I don't remember, did we ever reach a consensus?
Yes, we actually went to IFC with the proposed full-time employee for a mental health clinician, either an LCSW or an MFT, but we were encouraged to enter into a contract instead of provide a full-time employee.
I do, now that she says that, I recall that. The city did not want to have an employee. Well, the former city manager informed us that the city did not want to bring on another employee, and that's why this route was pursued, and we were trying to work with them in the city.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, I was involved in some of those, and I'm sure other members of the board were involved in other ones. I mean, my understanding was, you know, that they didn't want to go down the public-employee route at that juncture.
Correct.
Because they already had a contract to pay for that. And it leads to what Supervisor Bagwell was talking about, you know, we're either going to bite, going to take a bite out of the apple or we're not. I mean, this is kind of halfway. And I don't recall hearing these testimonies. I know Ally was here when we did the budget, but that's what, I mean, just wondering in my mind, you know, if we'd have heard this, we might have budgeted for a full-time employee at juvenile. I might have gone down that road rather than just say, "Okay, let's just take the grant money." But we didn't hear that. I mean, in those words, put it like that.
I have to defer to Ally to address that.
You know, I'm just saying, that's why I thought that, you know, we were going to do the one year, then the next year, we'd pick up and, you know, consider whether we're going to do a public, we're actually going to make an employee. And from what you're telling me, from the standpoint of the city, from your vantage point, is that we need to do this. We need to have an employee that looks at this, not just on a contract basis. Because if this is, if this is indeed a public safety issue, then we need to deal with that where we have some greater control over it rather than just a contractor. And that's my own two cents.
I need lots of help. If I remember correctly, that was the first option.
Yes.
That was our first choice. It was an effort to work with the city that we are where we are today. I think ultimately, that is the best option.
All right, just fine, Jim. That's okay. Supervisor Barrett, sorry, I jumped in on your light there.
Thank you. I'm not willing to give up on my long-held conviction that, or my longevity of being tired of seeing government at one level telling government at another level what to do. Whether you went to the legislature to get this, if they believe it's strong enough reasoning, and I don't think anybody at this podium disagrees, but they only fund it for one year, what they're basically saying is, this is a state need. We live in a delinquent state where the legislature holds our fate in its hand and then turns around and does these things to us. They have funding we don't have. And I want to ask you, Judge, because you said, "We don't have a choice but to do this." One of the reasons we don't have a choice but to do this is what you said, public safety. I don't disagree at all. But are you willing to go back to the legislature and say, "Look, you're putting us and every other community in the state in a bind because you're not providing the funding to do this, although you're requiring us to do this." Good that you're requiring us to do this, but, I mean, how can we get the legislature to give it off our back? I recall when I was sitting out there instead of up here during the recession, hearing the lament over and over again, the push downs from the legislature. And we're going to, we're going to get that again if we have another recession. So all, everybody up here is on your side, so to speak, ready to do this, but we are just really in a bind because we have lots of funding needs ourselves. But we are just really in a bind because we have lots of funding needs ourselves. Would you go back to the legislature and say, you can't go on doing this to us? Or is that just a dry hole?
Which part can I answer? Let me.
You can answer all or none of it.
I don't, I don't disagree with what you have said. Unfunded mandates are difficult. I understand that. I don't know statewide. Ally would be in a better position to answer if there's an appetite for a statewide effort to have funding for this comment.
On the juvenile justice side of things, I, I don't think that there's a statewide effort to continue to fund these services. However, on the mental health side, as far as behavioral health in the state of Nevada, I work closely with them. I am on their commission. There are different avenues that they are trying to approach in order to get funding for, or at least propose funding for this type of service. Whether that gets approved or not, I don't know.
Some lights on up here. They'll go there, there.
The mayor raises a question that I need some more clarity on. And that is whether it's a city employee or contract services. Considering the diversity of the mental health needs that you're dealing with. And I know it's difficult to get good mental health folks as on employee basis. So does a contract basis allow for better health care for those that need it? Do you have better option with regards to that? Is that the, a contract basis a better way to go?
Honestly, originally, my first proposal and option would be a full-time, a full-time clinician to join our staff. And the reason being that is consistency. The youth would see the same clinician in detention all the time, and also the same clinician on the probation side of, side of things. Right now, with Serenity, they're going to have to provide two different people to provide two different services, one in custody and one out of custody. So it complicates things a little more because we don't have as much consistency.
I just wanted, can I add something real quick? So when it came to IFC, the reasoning why we wanted to go with the, in the contract route was because we weren't, this was new, a new program for us. We knew we had the funding for one year. We weren't sure if, if there was enough for a full-time employee. And in addition, I think this person will need to be called out in the middle of, you know, could be called out in the middle of the night. We weren't sure how that would work with having an employee, FLSA, those kinds of roles, and not being able to have a set schedule. So that, that was the reason behind IFC's recommendation to go with a contractor.
Me? Okay. Yeah, I think the year or two of looking at what actually happens will give us a good foundation to know where to go in the future. But one of the other things for funding for the future that, since to me, mental health services is really a medical provision, I'd like us to look at whether we can use our indigent funds to be able to help this instead of the general fund. So I think over this next year or two, we have some options to look at ways to help meet this need. So I just want to put on the record, I don't see why we shouldn't look at tapping into the indigent funds that we have available instead of general funds, so.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Public comment? Anybody? I don't see any. Board, somebody want to try a motion?
I move to approve contract number 1819-015, a one-year contract with a one-year option between Serenity Mental Health and the Carson City Juvenile Services Department, Probation Detention, for mental health and substance abuse services effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2020, for an annual amount of $98,280 and a contract total of 190, no, delete that. Go back to, an annual amount of $98,200. We don't want any amount for year two.
Right.
Okay. Right. All right. So I approve, I'm going to start over. I move to approve contract 1819-015 as a one-year contract with a one-year option between Serenity Mental Health and the Carson City Juvenile Services Department, Probation Detention, for mental health and substance abuse services effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, for a contract amount of $98,280, allowing the district attorney's office to conform exhibit A to the comments provided in the record today.
Who has the option?
Serenity.
To extend.
The joint, joint option.
But we have the, we have the nonappropriation clause, and we have a termination clause, both outside of the option.
John?
Oh, I just can say, I think, I think it's covered. I also want to remind everybody who already, and you all already know it, that we can't bind a future board, although, obviously. So the next budget will be under a different conformance of this, composition of this board. So it's good that we're doing it this way, instead of the other way. I hope Serenity will live with that. And I'm sure that this is as best we can do under the current circumstances.
Well, I know, you know, I get a little gun-shy when we're, when we should be talking about employees. And I, we had this discussion when we were talking about the budget. And I know Ally and I had this discussion. You know, I'm going to vote for this, by the way. But I just, I'm concerned that if we're, we're cutting our nose off to spite our face and we're doing a patchwork, if we're, if we're really down here and we need this level of service, which I believe we do, then we ought to be talking about a permanent employee, rather than a contract. And granted, what John says, you know, we really can't bind another, another entity. But we contractually, you know, we're putting ourselves in that. And I know there have been concerns, you know, about using contract labor around, you know, where you don't, you know, you don't have any oversight on that. But, you know, so my, my own view is, this is an important issue that our community has to address. And if it takes money to do that, to hire an employee, I think that the next budget, we ought to do that and, and deal with it straight up. Okay? That's my two cents. So on the, any further discussion?
I don't think anybody disagrees with that in the longer haul. But I want to see how a new program works. And an employee is, you know, a situation that can grow, which may be good in this instance. I don't disagree with you.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay, carried. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Judge. Thanks to you guys over there.
Ally, since you made it public, hopefully I'm not going to get in trouble for congratulating you on your pending motherhood.
Oh, boy. Okay. Pending motherhood. All right. All right, let's take up internal audit. I know we've got a disclosure here. This is 16B. Lori, you want to make a disclosure? This is potential to, and let me just set the table so they know what you're doing. This is potentially to approve contract number 1718-137 for Carson City Internal Audit Services with Ida Bailey, with two one-year options, not to exceed an annual amount of $110,000. Okay? All right.
NRS 281A 420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. My son works for Ida Bailey. Although he does not have any direct involvement in Carson City audits, as an employee of Ida Bailey, the benefits he receives may in general be impacted by the awarding of contracts to his firm. Therefore, the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my position may be materially affected by this relationship. As such, I consider this to be a disqualifying conflict, and I will not be voting on this matter.
Disclosure's in order.
I think I also need to make a disclosure here. I was contacted by one of the members of the audit committee who actually voted for this, and they wanted to meet with me prior to today's meeting because they had some concerns about some procedural things in the audit committee. So I just wanted to put that on the record. She made some concerns to me, or provided some concerns to me. I don't think it affects this particular contract. It was more procedural, but I just wanted to get that on the record.
All right. All right. Carol?
All right, thank you. This is to approve contract number 1718-137 for Carson City Internal Audit Services with Ida Bailey LLP for fiscal year 19, with two one-year options for a not-to-exceed annual amount of $110,000.
And I just, I wanted to add that we've had the same internal auditors for over six years. So the audit committee recommended that we put this out for proposals. And we received three statement of qualifications from Ida Bailey, Moss Adams, and BKD. And we're recommending, and the audit committee is recommending Ida Bailey due to their level, the level of certifications. Everyone on the team is a CPA, just their extensive experience in Nevada, with Nevada counties, cities, and school districts. And their extensive experience with Carson City by performing our audit for over 15 years. And also their fees came in much lower than the current internal auditors. And there would be no travel, additional travel time charged to the budget. So that's why we were recommending Ida Bailey.
Okay. I think we're okay here so far. Any members of the public want to weigh in? Board? Motion's in order.
I move to approve contract number 1718-137 for Carson City Internal Audit Services with Ida Bailey LLP for fiscal year 2019, with two one-year options for a not-to-exceed annual amount of $110,000.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing that, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay, carried. Okay. Thanks much. Go do good work for us. Yeah, take, let's, let's be generous. We'll go in pretty fast. Let's take until 10 to 12. Just go till 12, 10 o'clock. Take your time. We're in recess for a little bit here, for about 10 minutes. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna call the meeting of the board supervisors back to order. We're on item 16 Charlie. This is potentially approved for contract number 1718-183 Sewer Pipeline Condition Assessment for Keller, to Keller Associates for a total amount not to exceed $242,800, $242,800 to be funded from the sewer maintenance professional services and the sewer warp fund. Okay, man, all right. Carol, do you need to say anything more? This is budgeted?
Yes, this is budgeted.
Dan, tell us why we're doing it.
Well, yeah, it's a sewer pipeline condition assessment as well as manhole assessment. This is, we have mentioned this in the past at our asset management meetings, so it's really ties into our asset management program. We issued a RFP back in April, and four teams submitted, very highly qualified teams, all of them. The decision was to go with Keller, as they had a lot of really good applicable experience to this. We've worked through the contract and scope, or the scope and fee, and for about a month now, we feel good about what's been proposed here. So they're gonna video the, the pipeline, they're gonna assess it per an industry standard scoring system. And then they'll bring that data back to the city and integrate with our GIS system. And we'll use that data in the future for CIP planning as well as preventative maintenance and future inspections, so it'll all tie together and really kind of bolster the asset management program. So that's the reason why we are doing this.
Dan, can you go over what work city staff will do?
Absolutely.
In this, because they're, they're working in partnership to complete a single task.
Yes, absolutely. So the reason why we wanted, we do have a TV van for the city, our sewer maintenance staff, but they're doing a lot of other things. But concurrently with this project, they will be doing assessment as well, very similar to what the consultant will be doing. And we want to do this concurrently to kind of speed up the process of getting a better picture of our system. We estimate with city staff and with the use of consultants in future years, we will be able to assess the sewer system in about five to seven years, is what we're estimating. So yes, we are trained at the city level to do this as well.
Good morning. So on this contract, I noticed it indicates that it's a multi-year phased approach, but you don't have renewals in the contract to use this vendor. Is your plan for the future years to do it ourself, or to bring us back a new contract? Try this guy out? What's the plan here?
Yes, so I think it's a multi-phase in the sense that we're starting this program for the next five years. I think this could be structured differently in the future as what, like, the city could be managing more of this part. We're getting a little help up front from Keller as far as master planning out where we're gonna assess. So I think in the future, it might look a little different, but I guess the phasing is that it is gonna be like a five to seven year program where we're gonna be doing this.
Good, good word, assess. Are you starting old to new, or do you know? Do we have the records that tell us where the, the problems might lie, so that you're going there?
Yes, so.
I, I wound up in a house over on the west side that had, had old, one break right in front of my, fortunately in the street, so the city had to take care of it.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. We are, like I said, the consultant will help us out, and we're gonna kind of brainstorm how we're gonna assess this, what sections we are. I think we will focus on the old pipes, at least mid to old pipes. We just don't want to get in a situation where we're assessing pipes all over the system, because that's not gonna be the most cost, all over the city, because that's not gonna be the most cost effective. So we do kind of want to centralize where the assessment lies, because we're gonna get the most videoing done in a short amount of time.
Guess what my question is, and maybe to make it clearer, do we have the records that tell us where the old ones are and where the new ones are?
Yes, sorry, yes, we do. We, we have a very good feel for, yeah, how, where the air pockets of old pipes, as well as the materials of the pipes. This will be more of looking inside the pipe, looking at, you know, it's hard to tell, I mean, some pipes that have been old hold up pretty well, some don't, until you get in there and actually assess and look at the, how it looks inside, we'll get a better feel for, I guess, the longevity of the pipe, and we can better plan for, for improvements.
Okay. You okay with this? Everybody okay? Board, I mean, public comment, anybody? All right. We'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve contract number 1718-183 Sewer Pipeline Condition Assessment to Keller Associates, Inc. for a total not-to-exceed amount of $242,800 to be funded from the sewer maintenance professional services and sewer warp professional services accounts as provided in fiscal year 18.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carried. Okay, let's take up the next one, 16 Delta. This is potentially to award a contract to VNC Construction for the Clear Creek Avenue Sewer Improvement Phase Two. Okay. Budgeted, Carol?
Yes.
All right, Dan, tell us what we're doing on this one, please.
Yeah, Dan's a city engineer for the record. So we, I believe back in May, we brought this project somewhat in front of you guys, because in that time, we're in the process of securing easements from various parties for this project. But it's a construction contract with VNC Construction to install a new upsized 10-inch diameter sewer pipe along Clear Creek Avenue from Center Drive to Snyder Avenue. There will also be, with this installation, it allows us to abandon an existing sewer line that runs adjacent to Clear Creek, so it's good to get it in the street where it's easier to maintain. So that's really the reason for the project. It's been planned for a while. There will also be some stormwater and roadway improvements as well with it. The low bid was slightly above our engineers estimate, was within about 2%, which is, you know, we like, we feel pretty good about getting that close, especially in this market. I think the last two sewer projects we brought before you, our engineers estimate was higher, so it's kind of a balancing act. So it is budgeted, and the timeline construction would, would be about three or four months for this.
Board comments? Public comment? You okay? Motion's in order.
I move to determine that VNC Construction, Inc. is the lowest responsive bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338 and to award contract number 1718-203 Clear Creek Avenue Sewer Improvements Phase Two to VNC Construction, Inc. for a base bid of $1,278,070.50 and a contingency amount of $127,807.05 for a total not-to-exceed amount of $1,405,877.55 to be funded from the Clear Creek Sewer Phase Two account as provided in fiscal year 18.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carried. Okay, moving right along, let's take up item 17. This is a potential resolution to provide a temporary interfund move to the, to Campo, which is the Carson Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, for $200,000 to be repaid next year, next fiscal year from Campo back. Who's doing this? Anybody?
Yeah.
Oh, the dragon lady's here.
Wow.
She's like, no comment. Just move on, Sherry.
Now, that's what I call a promotion.
So Deputy CFO, Sherry Russell.
All right, Sherry.
So I'm Sherry Russell, Deputy CFO. Yeah, we take, bring this to the board every year about this time. This is one of our grant accounts. It's a reimbursement type account, so we spend the money and then we get the money back. So this is a, just in case, we need this much money. I think right now, it's negative about $50,000, because we're waiting for reimbursements. So through June 30th, hopefully, it, it won't be up to $200,000, but just in case.
Thank you, Sherry.
We only move what we need to move.
All right. Public, any board comments? We okay? Pretty routine. Public comment? Sherry, thanks for letting us kid you too a little bit, but now you got a nickname, so. I mean, we say that because Sherry is tough. I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it. She's a, she's a toughie, so, all right. Motion's in order.
Resolution number?
2018 R 13.
I move to adopt resolution number 2018 R 13, a resolution for a temporary interfund loan from the Regional Transportation Fund to the Campo Fund for an amount not to exceed $200,000.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carried. Thank you.
It's good to be a dragon lady in your position, however. It's the right, right place.
That's right, it is. I mean, the pencil, the pencil doesn't get any sharper than what you do to it, man, so.
Well, I've never had a nickname, so I, that's a pretty good one. I'll take it.
All right, let's take up 17 Bravo then. Sherry, you're up again. Let's take up through the augmentations. This is 17B.
Yes, sir. So we do the budget augmentations twice annually. This is our final budget augmentation for fiscal year 18. Most of these augmentations are for unanticipated expenses, expenses contractually allowed through the various bargaining units, or approved through IFC or this board. So we're just making the budget match what's already been approved. So Pam's gonna help go through this on the screen as I, as I read.
Good morning.
So our general government estimated about $150,000 for the retiree termination payouts. That's for annual and sick leave. By that, I mean like the DA's office, city manager purchasing, I think the recorder had a, had a lady retire as well. So basically, the general government departments. State contracts, such as the public defenders contract, we pay a little bit for school crossing guards. Those calculations went up unexpectedly, or the contract went up via the state. So we're augmenting that by $111,000. IFC approved IT expenses for Office 365, and then protection against phishing schemes, and that was about $44,000. The sheriff's department, we're augmenting the budget to account for retiree termination payouts, vehicle repairs, medical care and domestic supplies, as well as some other small adjustments and corrections by $268,000. The fire department has some retiree termination payouts as well. Temporary staffing was increased a little bit, vehicle repairs, overtime increases, which are partially offset by revenue from them helping other firefighting districts. And then we have a reduction of about $100,000 in employee benefits as well. So that helped offset some of that overtime. The total fire department augmentations were about $915,000. Stop me at any time if you have any questions.
You will.
Okay. The courts, we have some hourly and overtime increases, attorney's fees, extraordinary court cases, and interpreter and expert fees, mental evaluation and other court expenses. This was about $426,000. And for this department, we actually already anticipate that we're gonna have these increases, because we haven't increased these line items for several years. In the 19 budget, if you recall, we did actually increase these line items, so we won't see this big of an augmentation next year for the courts, hopefully, hopefully, yes. Alternative sentencing, retiree termination and payouts of about $19,000. They had a little bit of hourly and seasonal employee increase, and then vehicle repairs to, it's about $72,000 was their total increase. Parks, they had some retiree termination payouts, vehicle repairs, and then the Eagle Valley Golf Course was in transition to new owners, so the city had to pick up some of those bills as well. And that was about $134,000 for parks. So out of the total there, the second from the bottom of the general fund, $2,426,280 was our contingency amount. And that total, we're asking to transfer $2,155,400 for the general fund, leaving $270,880 to fall to ending fund balance. That ending fund balance will be moved forward to the fiscal year 19 budget, and any unused amounts. So if there's no questions, move on to the Capital Projects Fund. This is basically IFC items approved for break fix. So copy replacement in the Health Department, the Freedom Monument, we had some asphalt replacement in the Sheriff's Office. There were two canine units. I think one retired and one was, had cancer, so he had to be retired as well. There were some parks issues, and a few other items on the list there. I didn't want to get into too much detail.
I have a question in Capital Projects.
Of course.
So I noticed that we have a line for a WNC sign for $75,000. That item has not come before this board before, so I think I'd really like to remove that from the budget augmentation until an agenda item or something can be brought forward to discuss.
Okay, of course.
So just as a note to all of us.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, so we also paid a little less in bond issuance costs, and we had a little bit of surplus sales of some property that we added back to the break fix. So total break fix at this point is $125,890 to get us through June 30th, 2018. And then whatever we don't use of that, will of course roll forward to fiscal year 19. We have a new business development fund that was approved by the board on May 3rd, so this is adding the donations of $200,000 and then a few other revenues, so they can spend some money. They only anticipate spending about $43,223 this year, as our donation will come in May of each year. So most of that will be spent next year and roll into next year's budget. The Regional Transportation Fund, we're adding $108,000 or $109,000 in motor vehicle fuel taxes, just because we're getting more than we anticipated. $128,500 in additional grant revenues are also expected to be received. And the rest of this is just moving money around from different projects and between the labor and construction account numbers, just to true things up for year end, and then roll it forward to next year. The Quality of Life Fund is just a couple little grants in there that we added. The grant fund, we're getting $596,847 of unanticipated grant revenue that we had to add in there. The 9/11 surcharge fund, we have additional revenue as a result of the legislation that changed, that we're, we're getting a little more money in there, so we allocated that accordingly, so they can buy their video cams. We have a new arts and culture fund that was approved on April 5th by this board. We're budgeting $69,000 approximately in revenue, which is 1% of room taxes, starting on March 1st, 2018, which will pay for one employee and then any related arts and culture activities. The debt service changed a little bit because of the Eagle Valley ownership change, just moving the revenue to a different line item. If you have any questions, I can go over that. The ambulance fund, we're doing pension expense, we're increasing by $42,000 in vehicle repairs a little bit, just to be on the safe side. Pension expense is a noncash item. It's just an adjustment to a liability account. It's like depreciation, but it, it hurts an accountant's heart to be over budget on something like that. So we're just putting that in there just in case. In stormwater, we have some bond issuance costs that we had to augment for, a little bit of construction, and then sewer bond interest. The offset to these is the premium that we're bond interest. Um, the offset to these is the premium that we, we received on the, on the bond issue that we did recently. Uh, there was a little bit of depreciation and pension expense adjusted there as well. And then cemetery had a little bit of salary and benefits adjustment. At workers' comp, we actually had two employees that were on the city's vocational rehab program during the year. Um, we haven't had them any since 2015, so we had to increase the budget for this. Um, citywide augmentations total was 1,971,894. And I will take out that 75,000.
John, Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you. Go back to the general fund part. You said it would, uh, roll, I don't know, you used the word roll forward or what, but anyway, we go to the ending fund balance. Is that gonna swell or decrease our ending fund balance, or is that unchanged?
Um, well, the 270 that I mentioned will actually increase fund balance, so it'll be in addition to next year's.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just for the record, I concur with removing the 75,000 for the WNC sign, since we've never even talked about that. And then, Sean, if you could come up real quick, uh, I didn't look up the numbers from previous years on the, on the fire overtime, but just looking at the number, it seems like the total number of overtime is higher than in past years and the reimbursements are lower. Can you walk us through how we got to these numbers and are these, is this a new trend or is this like a one-off because we were short-staffed? And what are you doing to correct that and going forward?
Thank you. Sean Slaman, you're a fire chief. Um, a couple items, so start from the beginning. Uh, overtime budget right now is projected to be just slightly over what it was last year. Um, we've seen about a 5% to 6% increase in total overtime expenditures over the last five to six fiscal years. Um, we were, fiscal year 15, we were at 1.28 and we're trending this year at 1.3, possibly 1.37. So, we're, um, we're up about 40,000 projected from last year, um, from fiscal year 17, excuse me. Um, some of the things that we can attribute to that, last year, um, we had a, um, we had several retirees as well as several resignations. Firefighters went to other agencies. Um, that happened over the summer months, which is, uh, a bad time for us. It's a high, obvious vacation period as well as fire season. Uh, so we were down several vacancies. We hired in the academy. Um, while the academy started, we lost one or two other personnel to other departments and then one, one firefighter was not successful in graduating from the academy. So, even when the academy got out in December, we were still down a couple bodies. What we've done to prevent that is, uh, I think Sheri had mentioned, there was a, an, a temporary augmentation of a position. We hired six firefighters this, this last academy that just graduated last week. Um, there is one extra body, uh, and one extra firefighter included in that that'll be short-term. That person, we were able to hire in advance of a, a known retirement that will happen in a few weeks. So, I'm happy to say, starting into fire season and this summer, we won't be down any positions. We're actually over one for two more weeks and then we'll, we will be at, uh, full staffing. So, that will help offset, um, some of the overtime expenditures. Uh, another thing that we saw this last year that's difficult to predict is we had several long-term, uh, fairly serious injuries, including shoulder surgeries, hernia surgeries. Um, those are long-term recovery items. Um, so those generate overtime staffing on a regular basis. And we also have another firefighter, uh, dealing with a, a more personal illness that's gonna be a long-term injury.
And what is the department's policy on allowing your firefighters to go out of state to fight fires when you're short-staffed?
So, um, great question. Um, we, what we look at is our total overall staffing availability as well as our apparatus staffing availability. So, if we don't have rigs to put on it or bodies to put on the rigs, we don't go. Uh, an example is, uh, the Santa Rosa fires, Napa fires that occurred, we actually declined several requests, um, to provide mutual aid because we were just down too many positions. I, we were, uh, we were mandating firefighters back at a, what I felt was an unhealthy rate, so we actually declined those responses. Um, we did accept a response for a mutual aid request to the Thomas Fire, which was later in the year, and that was due to the academy just getting out, so we actually had, uh, more personnel. So, uh, it is, it is generally my call on whether we send resources out or not. Um, I'm more apt to send, uh, if it's what I would call contiguous county or northern Nevada area, uh, just with our friends and neighbors relationships. When it comes to areas outside of that into California, we're a little bit more, um, selective on what we spend.
So, based on your testimony, then, um, what I hear you saying is that there's an expectation that you'll see a drop in overtime in the next fiscal year?
Um, I, I, I am, yes. Yes, I would expect that, um, pending anything unanticipated and increase in injuries or, um, additional personnel leaving the organization. I think we've stabilized that and, um, uh, I'm pretty optimistic we'll do much better this, this year. You bet.
All right. Other questions? The chief or on the augmentation? Public comment? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve the augmentations with the exception of the 75,000 dollars.
Okay.
It's an odd one how we got that in there.
I move to adopt resolution number 2018 R-14, a resolution to augment and amend the Carson City fiscal year 17-18 budget, as published with the exception of 75,000 for the WNC sign.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Motion passed. Okay, let's, uh, take up, um, uh, 17 Charlie. This is Community Support Grant Services. I think we've got some disclosures on here. Uh, let me start and then we'll see where we all go. Um, NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. I serve on the Board of the Capital City Circles Initiative, which is a nonprofit organization. The Ethics Commission has determined that issues on, that on issues related to funding a public officer like myself who volunteers on a broad board of a nonprofit organization has a commitment to the interests of that organization. However, I must make a case-by-case analysis on the issue of abstention to determine whether the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by this commitment. In this case, the Board is being asked to ratify the rankings made by a community-based application review work group for purposes of allocating CSSG competitive funding and one of the recipients of the funding is Circles. This work group was assembled and directed solely by staff. I had no involvement in the ranking process nor in the appointing of the members to the work group. I will be voting on the recommendations as a whole and not line items. Therefore, I feel that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person is, in my position, would not be materially affected by my commitment. As such, I will be voting on this matter and I should let the record reflect, I've had counsel assist in the drafting of that. Okay, any other disclosures?
I do.
Supervisor Barrett, Winkowski.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private capacity, in my private commitment, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm, NAI Alliance Carson City. In that capacity, I am also the employer of the Chair of the Application Review Work Group tasked with ranking and evaluating the proposed project applications for funding purposes. Although I have never discussed with my employee her actions with the work group or what their recommendations were, I feel that this matter may be affected by my employer-employee relationship and therefore constitutes a disqualifying conflict. Therefore, I will not vote on this matter.
All right. Any other disclosures?
Step down.
Step down. All right. All right. Who's taking this one? Anna, go ahead. All right.
Ana Jimenez, Grants Administrator. So, this is to allocate the Community Support Services grant funding for fiscal year 19 as recommended by the review work group. And I'm just gonna go over briefly the, um, the recommendations for the general programs. So, first we have, um, Domestic Violence Victim Assistance Project. This is, um, VARN, Volunteer Attorneys for Rural Nevada, and the recommendation is 15,000. We have Nevada Health Centers, 20,000. The Salvation Army, 12,000. United Latino Community, 20,000. RSVP, 12,250, and Capital City Circles, 5,000. And I have Hannah with me. She's gonna present the, um, the youth programs.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning. Hannah McDonald. Oh, I had surgery. I'm recovering now. It's, it's okay. I am right-handed though, so I'm challenged. Okay, Hannah McDonald for the record, Executive Director of Partnership Carson City. Um, I'm just going to provide for you the recommendations that the Partnership Carson City Executive Board, um, came to for the CSSG youth grants. So, the Brewery Arts Center, Arts in the Park Program, the recommendation is 2,000. NAMI of Western Nevada, recommendation of 7,241. Boys and Girls Club, Teen Healthy Habits Programming, 15,000. Ronwood Family Resource Center, Youth Operational Funding, which is for their mental health services, 25,000. Advocates to End Domestic Violence, Teen Dating Violence Program within the schools, 7,359,000. And, um, Food for Thought Grab and Go Program for the after-school, um, education programs at Carson High School, 7,000 dollars. And then the Grant Management piece for Partnership Carson City at 4% is 2,650 dollars. Are there any questions for me?
Questions? Okay. Public comment?
I have some questions.
Oh, questions. Hang on a minute, Nick.
All right. Um, I'd like to, uh, if I could, have United Latino Community come up so I could address, um, some questions of them. Is there a representative? Okay.
Hi.
Yeah, push the red button on that, or push the button on the speaker. There you go.
Got it.
Right, thank you. Um, I have some questions about your services. Um, do you charge for services?
No.
There's no charge whatsoever?
There is a charge for immigration, but those are, um, for legal advice. We have a, um, a legal attorney for immigration and Yada Seth Lugo, she works under his license. So, there is a reduction in price for, um, immigration applications and that is what we charge for.
Okay.
But not for the, um, client advocate position, which is what is, what we're asking for funding for.
Okay. The other question I have is, so you have one, uh, legal reference. You don't provide other legal references
Uh, we can
for immigration.
Right, we can provide, uh, referrals, but, um, if they decide to go ahead and go through our legal system or our, um, legal, uh, advice, then that would be part of that.
Okay, my question then pertaining to that, do you follow up to see if the attorneys are following through? The, the reason I ask this is I'm aware of a case in which, um, this person going through the immigration process was charged 10,000 dollars and the attorney did not show up to the hearing. They sent a substitute.
Yes, so
Which has created a snowball effect. And so, I'm, I'm concerned that the level of service provided actually helps folks as opposed to putting them in a more vulnerable position.
No, um, we get, uh, some cases where, um, like a client comes in and their legal services aren't met. Um, at that point, we can advocate for them, um, and we can recommend them to our, um, legal advice, and then they can decide if they go forth with whatever decision that they would, what, whatever situation is best for them.
All right.
Okay, sorry.
Let me just follow up on that just a second. So, who's, what, who picks the attorneys that you refer business to?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Who, who picks the attorneys or the law firms that you refer people to if they don't, if they don't, uh, use your internal services?
Um, if they don't decide to use our internal services, we just use a Google search at that point, and we give them options as to, like here, we have, uh, there's attorneys here in Reno, there's attorneys here in Carson, and then they go forth and decide. If they do need interpretation services, the client advocate goes ahead and acts as the interpreter for that.
Yeah, I heard about the same issue that I think Supervisor Abell was talking about. And, uh, you know, I think you need to do a little bit better job on, um, vetting the people you send some of these folks to, all of these folks to. Uh, because it's just not right to take money and then not show up or give it to somebody else in your firm or give it to a paralegal or something like that. And so, I think rather than do, you, Google searches are fine, but I think before you refer somebody, you ought to have a conversation with them as to whether or not that, that referral attorney, you ought to have a conversation with them whether or not they think they're capable of handling something like this and get it, you know, have them put on the spot a little bit that they're not just gonna take somebody's money and walk out the door and then ship it over to some lower-level, uh, employee if that's what happens. Uh, because I, I think that, that has happened and I think we need to look at that pretty carefully. So, um, take a closer look at who you're referring stuff to. It's not telling you who you have to refer to, but, okay? All right, all right. John? Is there a representative of the Brewery Arts Center here?
It doesn't look like they're in the room today, Hannah McDonald for the record, but I'm happy to answer any questions for them.
Can you answer a question as to whether they are proceeding with an audit?
I cannot, but I would like to safely assume that they are because of the amount of funding that they receive.
Well, I, I've heard that, but I haven't heard it officially, so, um, I'm sorry to hear they're not here.
Is that something you would like follow up on, on contingency of their funding?
Yes.
All right. All right. Uh, any other questions? Hannah or Anna?
Let me ask a little clearer on that. So, this is for funding that's to begin in July and the Brewery Arts is, is it 2,000 or something like that? They wouldn't even have an audit completed in time, so if their fiscal year ends?
I already knew that.
So, I, I just want to be clear here.
They've been talking about one.
You're saying no future funding without an audit or?
They've, they've talked about an audit for quite some time and I still have not heard that they have gotten one completed.
But, but I'm trying to understand what you mean by contingency. You want me not to give them 2,000 dollars in July? They wouldn't even get an audit done in time to get the 2,000?
No, I, they can't get an audit done. I, I will not hold up this. This is for children, but, uh
For future? That they wouldn't be eligible in the future?
I'm, I'm reticent about future if that's the case. They, they have talked about it for more than a couple of years. My wife used to be on the board. I know this. I have not heard since you left the board whether they've completed one or not. I don't think they have.
For my own understanding as their grant manager, um, because of it being smaller amounts, we don't request that they give us an audit?
I understand that.
Yeah.
I, I do understand that. And as I say, it's a, it's a smaller amount for children, but I'm just frankly trying to put the pressure on.
Okay, okay. I will look into it for you.
All right. Anything else from the board? Public comment? Nick, come on up. We all got your memo.
Won't tell you what we did with it, but we got it.
Oh, gosh.
I'm teasing.
At least you didn't, you never called me dragon lady.
Yeah.
So, I'm pretty happy about that.
You're just jealous, right?
I'm not sure what you used to call me, but, uh, good morning, everyone. For the record, my name's Nick Provodenti. I'm the Deputy Director and CFO of Nevada Rural County's RSVP Program. And with me today is Melanie Barkley, who is our Director of Development. Unfortunately, Susan Haas couldn't be here because ironically, she's tending to her 92-year-old mother. So, uh, as I'm sure you are aware that we've been partners with the city for, you know, since we've been in existence over 40 years ago, and we provide services to seniors, adults with disabilities, and more recently, veterans who are struggling to remain independent through our network of highly-trained volunteers. We, we feel we provide critical services to these populations, including home companionship, homemakers, respite care, escorted transportation, pro bono legal services, uh, personal emergency response systems, resistance exercise training, farmers' market coupons, and most recently, with the help of the 2018 CDBG funds of veterans' assistance through our Veterans VIP Program. Now, I understand, I've, I've, I've been on both sides of the, of the table with the Citizens Committee, that they had a very tough task, having 147,000 dollars in requests. that they had a very tough task, having $147,000 in requests while only having about $84,250 to divide up. They are recommending that RSVP receive $12,250 of the $25,000 requested. As noted in the application, we can proceed with the projects in Carson City, but this partial funding would require a scaling back of service delivery. In particular, unfortunately, we project that we'll probably have to scale back our Veterans VIP program, which we have basically just gotten started. You know, we've gotten started with the seed money from the 2018 CDBG funds, and we're not asking for any of those funds, and we were hoping to get, you know, the funding to keep that going. You know, we've really trying, really trying hard to recruit volunteers and clients through targeted Nevada PL advertising. That's been one of our main goals. And without this, we'd have to scale it way back. So just a couple of final thoughts. You know, we understand that there is a certain amount of funding available that is hardwired in the budget every year, and we would very much like to make a case to be part of these non-competitive funds, and, because we believe our services are critical, high priority, and would cost less than the city to provide these services. And I'll give you an easy example. It would be our transportation services. We provide free door-to-door transportation to seniors, adults with disability, and veterans. If we were to go away, you know, the need would not go away. And I would think the city would probably have to, you know, the service would probably have to be provided by paratransit services, which I know are very expensive. And also, I would just like the board to consider increasing the amount of funding for the CSSG program. I know that the economy has gotten better based on budget presentations for 2019 and beyond. You know, an extra $62,750 would go a long way in providing needs, you know, to these highly needed and critical services. So with that, we just want to thank you for your consideration. Continue to look forward with partnering with the city and, you know, as we help the elders, adults with disabilities, and veterans. So I'd be, you know, if you want to ask any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them, or just basically wanted to get those comments on the record. Okay?
No problem. And, you know, Nick, we tease each other, but, you know, it's not lost on me, you know. The city's on a pretty good financial footing because, you know, you and your successors, you know, what you trained to succeed, you were pretty darn good, so.
Well, thank you. You know, we kind of had a succession plan when I was leaving. You know, Nancy and I had basically hired Cherry. I didn't think that Nancy would succeed so fast and Cherry would become, would become the Finance Director that quickly, but I think the city's in good hands.
All right, all right. And I appreciate you coming. You know, we all know what RSVP does, and, you know, these are never easy decisions, so we'll see what the board says here. Thanks, Nick. Okay. Anybody else? Public? Anybody? Applicants? Board? Who wants to take the first bite?
Oh, did you want a motion?
Motions are in order now. I think we're ready to go.
I move to allocate the community services grant funding for 2019 as recommended by the Application Review Work Group and Partnership Carson City.
I'll second.
And then on discussion?
Yeah, we'll do it on discussion. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Go.
And then for discussion, I think that when we have our annual retreat meeting, I'd like this to be placed as one of our agenda items so the board can discuss processes. You know, when are we going to look to the, he called it "hardwired," but the ones that we give automatic funding to, if we could work on some procedures and things. So I think we have some discussion items maybe at the retreat that I would like to see some of the points that Mr. Providenti provided. Thank you.
Any other board discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and I will be voting on the total here. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Okay.
And I'd just like to say thank you to the work group because I know how hard this is, so appreciate all your efforts.
All right. You know, that, the support grants and CDBG and all that along with, you know, what we do for appointment of boards and commissions, those are always difficult decisions. I mean, you know, and it, I mean, there are a lot of difficult decisions that come before us here, but, you know, those get right down on a personal side of stuff. And so you're right, we need to take a look at whether there's a way we can maybe streamline or do something different here. Okay, let's take up item 18. This is dedication of right-of-way, also known as Companion Lane, Handel and Road, Salton Drive, Salturn Drive, and V.A. on, I think that's pronounced, Pike Lane, for Mills Landing Townhouses. It's a planned unit development. Stephanie?
I have a disclosure.
Your disclosure is in order. I'm sorry, Ben.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. Currently, I am a prospective owner of one of the Mills Landing Townhouse units, and that unit is in escrow with myself as the buyer. Because the dedication and acceptance of a right-of-way from the planned unit development of Mills Landing Townhouses may have an impact on the development and its units overall, and I have an economic interest in one of these units, I believe this is a disqualifying conflict, and therefore I will not vote on this matter.
All right. All right. Go.
Thank you. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager.
Dragon Lady, too.
We need a better nickname.
Yeah, I agree. Better nickname, please.
I thought we needed a nickname for the mayor.
The planned unit development for Mills Landing Townhouses was approved by the Board of Supervisors on July 21, 2016. Following that approval, the final parcel map was submitted for recordation. APN 002-771-09 containing the road right-of-way was offered for dedication at the final map. The final parcel map was recorded in November of 2017. However, the acceptance of right-of-way requires a separate document, and the resolution has been provided for you.
Board, we knew this was coming, so. Public comment? Motions in order.
Is it 2018R15?
Second.
Okay. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018R15, accepting the dedication of right-of-way from APN 002-771-09, also known as Companion Lane, Handel and Road, Salturn Drive, and B.L. and Pike Lane, as offered on the official plat of Mills Landing Townhouses, a planned unit development, recorded as map number 2930 on November 22 of 2017.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Abstain and no. Okay. All right, motion passes. All right. Let's pick up item 18 Bravo. This is a right-of-way dedication as well for Drysdale Court and Saratia Drive for Silver Oak.
I have a disclosure.
Disclosure is in order.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. Where a substantial and continuing business relationship exists, there may be a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm, NAI Alliance Carson City. My firm is the listing agent for an ownership entity which includes two principals who are also principals in the Silver Oak planned unit development. Because a business relationship exists between myself and the principals of Silver Oak, and also because of the effect my vote may have on that relationship, a reasonable person in my position may be materially affected, and therefore I will not vote on this matter.
Okay. Go.
Thank you. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager. Similarly, with this request for acceptance of right-of-way, the Silver Oak planned unit development tentative map was originally approved by the Board of Supervisors back in '93. Since that time, there have been several phases that have come through and been recorded. In April of 2006, the tentative map for Phase 21 did come back to the board. There were some proposed changes, and that's why that came back to the board. And the final map was recorded in May of 2017. And similarly to the previous item, the offer for dedication must be accepted by a separate document.
Okay. Board, anybody? Public comment? Motion in order.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018R16, accepting the dedication of right-of-way from APN 007-635-01, also known as Drysdale Court and Saratia Drive, as offered on the final map of Silver Oak Phase 21 of the Silver Oak planned unit development, recorded as map number 2914 on May 25 of 2017.
There's a motion and a second on a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye or aye. Opposed, nay. There's one abstention. Supervisor Minkowski abstained, and I don't see any no vote. Okay, passes. All right. Is that okay with you? All right. All right, let's take up the next dedication. 18 Charlie.
I have a disclosure.
Okay.
Same disclosure as the last item. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. Where a substantial and continuing business relationship exists, there may be a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm, NAI Alliance Carson City. My firm is the listing agent for an ownership entity which includes two principals who are also principals in the Silver Oak planned unit development. Because a business relationship exists between myself and the principals of Silver Oak, and also because of the effect my vote may have on that relationship, a reasonable person in my position may be materially affected, and therefore I will not vote on this matter.
Okay. Any other disclosures? Seeing none. Board comment? Public comment, anybody? All right, motions in order.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018-R17, accepting the dedication of right-of-way from APN 007-644-01, also known as Sienna Drive, Vineyard Drive, and Jordan Court, as offered on the final map of Silver Oak Phase 22 of the Silver Oak planned unit development, recorded as map number 2934 on February 13, 2018.
There's a motion and a second on a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay, and abstention. One abstention. Okay, Supervisor Minkowski abstained. All right, let's take up 18 Delta. This is right-of-way for North Lompah Lane for Carson Land Holdings LLC. Stephanie?
For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager. The tentative parcel map for Carson Land Holdings was approved by the Parcel Map Review Committee on June 12, 2012. Following that approval, the final map was submitted and recorded. The right-of-way was offered for dedication, however, it wasn't accepted at that time. Similar to these other ones, there is a requirement that it come forward separate to the board, but there were also some improvements that were being proposed and have since been constructed, so it's appropriate timing for this to be brought to the board for acceptance of dedication.
Okay. Board comments? Disclosures, anybody? No board comments? Public comment, anybody? I don't see any. A lot of these, you know, we knew these were coming, so it's just an acceptance of a dedication. This last one's got a little bit of additions to it, but, okay, motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018R18, accepting the dedication of right-of-way from APN 008-153-05, also known as North Lompah Lane, as offered on the parcel map for Carson Land Holdings LLC, recorded as map number 2782 on December 3, 2012.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye. Opposed, nay, carried. No abstentions. All right, let's take up 18 Echo. Paiute Pipeline?
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, I'd like to make a disclosure on behalf of the DA's office.
Sure.
NRS 281A.420 requires a public official to publicly disclose a conflict of interest implicated by any matter before this board. Further, the official must not participate in the matter if the conflict would materially affect the judgment of a reasonable person in the public officer's situation. Stacy Woodbury is the wife of District Attorney Jason Woodbury and an employee of Southwest Gas. Southwest Gas owns Paiute Pipeline, which is an interested party in the pending agenda item. The judgment of a reasonable person in the district attorney's situation would be affected by his relationship with his spouse. Therefore, the district attorney has recused himself from participation in this matter. I would also add that with regard to the legal matters for this pending matter internally at the DA's office, Jason has also recused himself. So he's put up a wall where he's not been involved in any of the legal proceedings behind the scenes.
All right, and we'll pick up that disclosure for the next agenda item as well. So we'll just incorporate it by reference. Okay?
Thank you. The item before you is for possible action to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a grant of permanent easement across APN 01003401 and a grant of permanent easement across APN 01005201 by Carson City to the Paiute Pipeline Company for the installation and maintenance of a natural gas pipeline or pipelines and appurtenances pursuant to NRS 244.279, which allows for the sale or lease of right-of-way to a public entity, and to approve the letter agreement between Carson City and Paiute Pipeline Company, including the grantee's offer of compensation in the amount of $13,350 for the permanent easements, and to authorize the Finance Department to place the revenue in a separate-line item in the Quality of Life account to be spent only on the subject properties for open space improvements, operations, and maintenance. The presentation that Jennifer, Budget Director of Parks and Recreation Open Space, and I have for you pertains to both of the following items. We just kind of wanted to give you an overview. There are two separate components to this and two different segments of the project, but the first motion has to do with those that are the permanent easements. So just to give you some overview, the Segment 2 project location is where the permanent easements for right-of-way are required. On the parcels that are highlighted in the orange, those are the city's parcels where the easements are being requested. And there is a need to cross the front of those parcels in close proximity to our existing pedestrian and bicycle path there, and so that brings forward the necessity for those easements. We do have an exhibit that zooms in a little bit more to see, and this is really just a schematic overview for graphical presentation, but you'll note that while in close proximity to the right-of-way, where there is already an existing franchise agreement, this is on separate city property, and so that's why we're bringing it forward to you today. The second part of the project is a request for some temporary right-of-way, which will be the second item that we'll be going into. And those easements total approximately 1.92 acres, and they encumber our property essentially where we have our golf course along Highway 50 East. And again, there are existing right-of-way and existing easements in the area, but just because of the need to construct and have some room to do so, that's why the temporary easements are being requested. Through the process, we have been working with Paiute Pipeline for about the past year, and so we've been having a lot of discussions in regards to design, but also some compensation for fair market value. So we did ask for an appraisal to be completed. We also asked for some incorporation of some financial mitigation in addition to that, which results in the $13,350 for compensation. And one other component that was really important, especially this is because it's on parks and open space property, is that we're comfortable with the revegetation plan that is proposed. The overall project had to go through the Federal Environmental Review Committee because that's what's required for the public utility, and so there was a lot of coordination with BLM, with the city, and actually, the overall project goes through several counties. So there was some stipulations in our agreement as well as in that revegetation plan through the FERC that we would make sure that the ground cover would, the revegetation would come back and be successful. So that was an important component. A few other things that we just wanted to highlight in our terms and contents of the agreement. The first of all is that it's not an exclusive easement. We wanted to make sure that we preserved the public access, and also the city's right to go in and improve those areas to provide some of the amenities that we, you know, would include in our pedestrian path and park facilities. We also included provisions for restoration of any damages to the path. Paiute Pipeline also agreed to remove some excess sediment that is along Edmonds from the 2017 floods, so that was an additional requirement that they agreed to. And then there's also an exhibit that shows some improvements to the drainage and grading at Fifth Street. We understand that there are representatives from Paiute Pipeline Company here. They can discuss any specific questions that you might have about the design of the project.
Let's see where we go first. Then, board? Questions? Supervisor Bagwell, go.
Maybe not question as much as comment, kind of like what I did earlier. Why sell it instead of do leases? I noticed that one of the things with the state, with our own utilities, we're paying them, and then every five years, they come back, reassess the value. So maybe it's more a comment for the future, and again, something that we look at during the retreat, why are we selling, I guess, is my general question versus just doing a lease.
We also considered, there similarly is- We also considered, there similarly is lease agreements with the state on the properties that are adjacent to these parcels here, and so, you know, those were things that we did contemplate in our negotiations with Paiute. Those agreements kind of took place after we already headed down the road that we were, and so, you know, in the process of negotiation, this was a compromise where we met. We do, in fact, the district attorney's office and I have a strong desire to come up with a different template that we will be using to move forward in the future, especially when it's a long-term project.
So the answer is you were too far into the process to retract the decision? Okay.
And I would just add to that. Our consideration for the financial mitigation ended us really financially in the same place. So when we looked at the added value that we requested from Paiute versus the fair market value that showed up on a one-time payment for the easement, we used comparable assessments to what the state used, and we turned that out over 20 years. So really, we based the valuation and the financial mitigation amount on what would have been that same dollar amount, even if we had put it in a lease agreement.
So just to clarify, the easement, the permanent easement appraised at $3,350. The financial mitigation amount is $10,000. Lori and I kind of talked about this, you know, previously about changing a policy decision on how we treat easements. We've already looked at changing the deeding template, so I think that this is just the next step, that we look at a policy decision on how we handle easements and what gives us the ability to go back in and reanalyze the value of that easement going forward instead of trying to settle for a one-time amount when the easement's in perpetuity.
Yeah, we've got that five mini-cell stuff coming up, so we might want to take a look at that. All right. All right. Any other comments from the board? Public comment? Seeing none, motions in order on 18 Echo.
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a grant of permanent easement across APN 010-034-01 and a grant of permanent easement across APN-010-052-01 by Carson City to Paiute Pipeline Company for the installation and maintenance of a natural gas pipeline or pipelines and appurtenances pursuant to NRS 244.279, which allows for the sale and lease of right-of-way to a public utility, and to approve the letter agreement between Carson City and Paiute Pipeline Company, including the grantee's offer of compensation in the amount of $13,350 for the permanent easements, and authorize the finance department to place the revenue in a separate line item in the quality of life account to be spent only on the subject properties for open space improvements, operations, and maintenance.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion carried. Let's take up item 18F. This is a similar one that we just discussed with respect to Paiute Pipeline. We'll incorporate by reference the disclosure of Dan Yu with respect to the district attorney. Go. I know you talked about it to just fill us in on the record, so we've got a record on this item itself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager. There is one, there's one part of the motion that we would like to ask for a modification to under item number three, to authorize the finance department to place revenue in a separate line item in the quality of life account. We actually need to identify what that account will be. And I know Jen talked with Sheri. The quality of life wouldn't be appropriate because this is not an open space parcel, it's a parks parcel. And so we just want to identify that appropriately for the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director, this is the parcel for the golf course. It's not eligible for quality of life funds, so we want to just make sure it's separate and appropriate. So if we could just direct finance to put it in the appropriate account, I think that would probably be enough.
Sheri?
I did talk to Jen about this, and so the money we receive will be held in a reserve account because it's restricted for certain purposes for park in the general fund. So we have plenty of other restricted money, so we'll just follow that same procedure.
Okay. All right. Board, anything further?
Do we need to amend the previous motion?
Nope.
Don't fix what does.
Quality of life, open space. This one's a different parcel.
Public comment, anybody? Board, ready to go?
I have a question.
Question, go.
On the, the recording deed for the temporary easement, we had discussed changing the language. It currently says that said use of described temporary easement be restricted to a period of time not to exceed six months from the date of this instrument or the completion of construction, whichever is the latter. And I just wanted to add a not-to-exceed date, or additional compensation would be due. So we either need to put in a capped date, a hard date, because when you just say whichever is the latter, and it's based on the completion of construction, what if construction is never completed? What if it gets stopped for some reason? So I just want to make sure that we have a termination date, a hard termination date in there.
And I believe, I believe in the letter agreement, which does pertain to both. I'm going to confirm this as I'm looking. There was, the intent was, and I'm going to make sure it's in there, if not, we will verify that, that it would be for, we were being paid for 18 months because they figured that would be how long it would take.
We're being paid for three years.
I'm sorry, three years. You're right. And so that was in the letter agreement, but let me just verify that real quickly.
So because this is a recorded document, I just, I guess in the motion, we can just give direction to correct the language. Is that okay, Dan?
If that's going to be the intent of the board, we say what the language is going to be. I mean, how would you correct that?
The letter agreement does indicate that that's based on a three-year period of occupancy of the temporary easements. I would ask Dan to clarify, but my understanding was that the actual grant of easement document through Paiute, there was some concerns about changing that language, but we could add that to the addendum of the grant of easement, and then I think we can satisfy that requirement.
I don't understand that.
I think because the grant of easement is their form document, you'll note that on each, each of the grants of easement, there's an addendum that follows the exhibits, and that addendum has some things that are particular to the item, because they didn't want to change the form document. It's a standard format that they use throughout, so the addendum allows for us to put some of those exceptions and conditions in it. So I think that would be the appropriate place for it.
And I haven't looked at the document, but does the underlying form reflect the attachment of an addendum?
Yes.
And the addendum gets recorded?
Yes.
All right.
I guess my concern is that we're then recording a document that's not accurate.
In the recorded document.
I thought they were saying they're going to add it in the addendum, and the addendum is recorded.
It is recorded.
That one is recorded, not the letter agreement.
So is there language that the addendum supersedes the grant?
There is.
Yes.
There is. It does state that.
Right.
Okay. And then, in the letter agreement, item 12 says, "Recordation of this letter agreement and temporary easement will be at the discretion of the Board of Supervisors." So I think we need to make a determination on that, and my preference would be that all documents are recorded.
Record the letter agreement.
Okay. Other board comments? Public comment? Motion's in order. Brad, you want to make the motion? Lori? Go.
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a grant of temporary easement across APN 008-391-15 for the installation of a natural gas pipeline or pipelines and appurtenances pursuant to NRS 244.279, which allows for the sale or lease of the right-of-way to a public utility, and approve the letter agreement between Carson City and Paiute Pipeline Company, including grantee's offer of compensation in the amount of $1,800 for the temporary easements, and authorize the finance department to restrict the funds in the general fund for parks, operations, and maintenance, and to add a date for completion in the addendum, and to record the letter, what do we call that? Letter agreement.
To record all applicable documents.
And all applicable documents.
And the addendum you're referring to is attached to the letter agreement, right?
The addendum is to the grant.
To the grant. All right. There's a motion and a second. Everybody clear on the motion? Paiute Pipeline, you all clear on the motion? All right. Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. All right. Thank you. All right. All right. Let's now...
Can we take a break?
Why don't we take a break for five minutes, and then we'll come back and we'll do solid waste. You ready? All right, we're going to bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're now going to take up item 18 Golf. This is to provide staff direction to issue a request for proposals for solid waste and recyclable materials, franchise collection services. Mr. Cooley, how are you this morning?
Doing good, doing good. Happy to get to this point.
Disclosures in order.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm of NAI Alliance, Carson City. One of the brokers employed by my firm is currently working with one of the entities who may submit a proposal to the RFP in an effort to identify a site to lease or purchase if the entity is selected as the successful vendor. However, this effort is preliminary, and no lease or purchase has been transacted. Furthermore, this matter does not affect me any differently than the rest of the general public, and so there is no disqualifying conflict. As such, I will be voting on this matter.
All right. Any other disclosures? I don't see any. Rick, go ahead, go.
Rick Cooley, Public Works. We're here for you today to kind of bring closure to the first phase and actually present the draft RFP and agreement to be able to issue that and start our next phase, actually having vendors submit. So with me today is Carissa McAfee. She's going to give a little presentation of where we're headed with this, and then we'll open it up for comments.
All right. Go.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. I will quickly go through this deck.
Don't worry about it.
Okay. We are presenting the draft agreement and the RFP document today. The draft agreement is a document that provides guidance regarding the expectations for the proposers and ultimately the contractor regarding the scope of services, the requirements that are set forth for processing and collection and disposal, any of the operational or administrative requirements and fees, rate structures, et cetera. The next step for this document, it is in draft form. It has been reviewed and brought to this step as a reviewed document, but proposers will have an opportunity through this process to propose modifications to the draft agreement, which would come before you ultimately to decide if that's acceptable. It would only be considered as part of negotiations, but there is a process in place in this RFP for modifications to be brought forward and then reviewed by the department that's affected. Also, any of the services that are proposed, because we are asking for some amount of creativity, especially when it comes to the green waste, yard waste material, those actual accepted services will be incorporated into the draft agreement when it comes before you as a finalized agreement. So those are the two main components that could potentially change through this process. The contract term is a 15-year term with one option... The contract term is a 15-year term with one option for a two-year extension. The franchise fee would be 8%, 3% of which would be designated for the road impacts that certainly occur as a result of the large collection vehicles being out on the roadway six days a week. Some items of note, as you have directed, it includes franchise residential, commercial, and city services. Does not include the construction and demolition, that will be open market. There's mandatory residential service, including weekly curbside solid waste, bi-weekly curbside recycling, a greenway solution to be proposed by the participants, and then bulky item collection of up to four items per year per household. For multifamily and commercial services, solid waste services with where the customer can select whatever bin size and frequency per week best suits their needs, an offer of recycling services, and then again, a greenway solution that can be offered to them where they can voluntarily participate, and that will be proposed by the proposers. For city services, we wanted to ensure that all of the services that are currently contractually required, as well as anything that is just a practice, would be memorialized in this process so that there wouldn't be any drop-off in city services or any unexpected cost to the city. So we've worked diligently to identify all of the current service levels and some additional items that the city would have the option of using in the future as needed, since this is a 15-year contract, and all of that information was provided and is described. But most importantly, I believe all the city facilities will be handled, the city cleanup services, and then also illegally dumped items. That is something that is very important and that's incorporated into this agreement where the hauler is responsible to receive a call or to go through the connect system and respond when a sofa is left on the side of the road, which hopefully that will not happen often. Some additional items of note, we were asked to look at the mandatory service exemption, and as directed, it will be available to any single-family customers who are able to provide landfill receipts from the previous 12 calendar months, and we're working on the different ways to advertise, to get the word out, and make sure that folks who are going to use this exemption are aware of it and are able to have the documentation that they need. For those customers who either have a vacant lot, who anticipate a longer-term property vacancy, or we also heard from some residents who go on longer-term vacations during certain seasons, there are processes in place to either not have service for vacant lots or to suspend service with just a maintenance fee so that it can be resumed. So they would have those options. Delinquent accounts would go through the NRS 444.520 process, starts off with the fees and charges, and then goes into the state required lien process, and then also a low-income senior citizen reduced rate, where their rate would be at 80% of whatever the ultimate rate is that is accepted by the supervisors through this process. The schedule has been set. It is, you are able to adjust the schedule at your discretion. It is clearly stated in the RFP that if you so choose to modify the schedule at any time for any reason, you are able to do so, but we hope and will work toward a very smooth implementation of this timeline. We will make sure to put the time of the mandatory pre-proposal meeting, which is 2:00 PM, into the final document before it goes out, and then come before you during the scheduled times, first for your direction on which proposal you would like to accept and direct us to negotiate, and then finally, the ultimate negotiated agreement for your approval. So we'll be back before you a couple of times. A few items of note for the RFP document, and I know there's some proposers in the room here today, and this is something we like for everyone to be very aware of, is we do require a proposer code of conduct to be signed by all participating companies. They must have it notarized and bring it to the pre-proposal meeting as a requirement of participating. It's effective as of today. It's post-dated or post-effective. It prohibits any ex parte communication with the supervisors and staff, any gifts or compensation to supervisor staff or our consulting firm, any collusive activities. So we want to make sure that this is a very above-board and transparent process and that all of those proposers who are participating understand that those are the rules. For the evaluation of the proposals, we had a number of discussions at length with the city staff and have brought these criteria and waiting forward for your consideration. The responsiveness to the RFP, that's just meeting the general requirements, of course, and that's pass fail. The qualifications and experience, which includes references and their ability to come in and provide an effective transition, and how they've done in prior service transitions, and the personnel requirements, and also performance records. What, how are they in their environmental safety and other areas where there could potentially be issues? We want to make sure that excellent companies are coming forward to provide service here. Next is the proposal for collection services, and that's the actual proposal. How are they going to operate? What services are they proposing, especially when it comes to those where we've asked for them to be creative and come up with good solutions that really meet the needs of this community? We also want to make sure that the public education and promotion programs are effective. There's a number of stipulations in the agreement that require extensive communication with customers, because that was a big piece of the community feedback, that the process that you all had us undergo before even starting this process, and so we want to make sure that that communication takes place. The fourth item is the implementation plan and capabilities. A transition to either a new service provider or new services under an existing service provider, either transition is very complicated. We want to make sure that goes as smoothly as possible. We do not want your phone to ring, so we will work hard to evaluate that carefully. And then finally, the cost proposal, which we evaluate both for reasonableness. We'll be looking to see are enough trucks proposed, or enough is the, are all the costs for each of the different components? Are they reasonable for providing the services that are proposed? We don't want someone coming in and offering rates that are lower than what's needed and then either having a failure to provide service or in need for some adjustment. So we evaluate that closely. So reasonableness, and then also competitiveness. Where does it stack up in comparison to the other participating proposers? Finally, we do note any of the suggested changes to the agreement, and if it's material, say for example, there's pushback on the number of city events that they're willing to support. If it's something that reduces the level of service, we want to make sure that you're aware of that, so you know what you're getting, or if you would even choose to allow that exemption to go forward. So that's at your discretion. So that's just a very brief overview of the documents, and we're looking forward to moving forward with this process according to your direction.
Supervisor Aboud and I met with staff and with Carissa on the phone to go over the proposal or the draft documents. There were a lot of technical corrections that we made to dates, hours of operation, days of operation. I won't go over those unless the board wants me to. I'll just stick to the major policy items. The first, which is actually an item that we didn't talk about on our, in our meeting, was the 3% of the 8% franchise fee. Should we be looking at indexing that to CPI so that that portion, which is to go towards the impacts of the trucks, the trash trucks on the road, so that we're keeping up with So that's one item I'd like to look into to see if we have the ability to do that. The next item was just a technical correction, and that's, there's a provision in here that allows for the information package about the service to be provided to all customers at the end of year five and the end of year 10 of the agreement, and I wanted to add that that would also be provided at the end of year 15 if the vendor exercised the two-year option, just so that we're consistent and we're getting that package out every five Then if, in the scope, which is on page 13, item 3.4.2, I wanted to add a third bullet point that says notice will be provided within five business days, written notice will be provided within five business days to the city for a change of designated liaison. On page 59 of the draft, the performance bond, currently this calls for $100,000 performance bond. We discussed that. We're looking into whether that's adequate to cover the damage provisions that it would need to cover, so we'll take a look at that, and that may be revised. And then finally, on page 70 of the package, under 1310A, the contractor is required to pay a transfer fee of 1% of the gross billings for the most recently completed rate year if they are requesting an assignment of this contract, and my question was, if the assignment is denied, is that fee returned? So we're looking into that as well. And that's the items that I had.
Yeah, following up on Brad's reference to the 3% of the 8%, is that an industry standard, or is that something that you came up with some formula? And I like the CPI idea, is that possible?
As for the franchise fee, it's a, it's not really industry standard, but around us right now, there's folks that are at 5%, folks that are at 8%, there's one that's at 10%. As for the road impact fee, same thing, they've done it multitude of ways. Sometimes it's 1%, the one I saw was 10% plus a 1%.
So it could be higher.
It could be, yeah.
And we could have an escalator.
I believe we can. We'll have to look into that to see how that works, yes.
So first issue first was, do we want to put a CPI on the franchise fee? Aren't we naturally doing it because we have the CPI in the annual rate anyway? So that CPI will be applied to the base rate annually, not exceeding 5%, so we're gonna get that CPI in the franchise fee anyway. So I think what you're trying to accomplish happens with the annual rate adjustment, because that's already provided for in the contract.
Weren't we talking about the 3%? I was.
Well, I'm saying the whole 8%, which includes the 3%, the rate can annually change based on the CPI, so you're, if the rate goes up a buck, we get 8 cents. I'm just saying, we're already going to be CPI adjusting, so I really don't know that we need to, and you can work the math out, but I think we'd already get that. Okay. And I heard Brad indicate that something on the hours of operation, and I'd like to clearly understand that, because I noticed it was 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and I was told that was the current contract, because I had also said, mm, 6:00 AM in a residential zone, but I thought that was existing times, and then it was 5:00 AM for the commercial. So what were you suggesting to change in the hours of operation?
You're correct. The actual time of day didn't change. What changed was there was a couple of references into seven days a week as opposed to six days a week, which is what our current landfill operations are. We, there was a couple of those that were left in, it didn't get changed from seven to six.
Okay.
But as for the actual time...
It's days of operation, not hours.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then I have a few that I had sent in, and I just want to make sure everyone's okay with. Some of them, the technical ones, I'm with Brad, and we probably even duplicated, because great minds think alike, but I had some technical changes on definitions that are included that don't exist in the document, so you'll remove any definition that's not actually like brown and things like that, that aren't used. In the, in some word deletions and duplications, we're gonna work on the illegally dumped definition to make sure that's clear of what items are in and what items are not. And then I also wanted to be much clearer on what is the bulky items, because you have a definition for bulky items, but I want to make sure that the e-waste is included in the bulky item, because people want to eliminate those two, and that wasn't clear for me. I'm also, there were some reporting requirements back to the city, but I'd like to make sure that those are gonna come to the board of supervisors at least once a year, that we can have a report on any of the complaints and things like that. I'd like it to be a monitoring report to the board. There, I also didn't see anything dealing with disabled people that would need help. We talked about it previously, but I didn't see that it hit the document as to what their plan is to let people, what are we gonna do if someone needs service help?
I think that is in there. I saw it.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, there is. There's, it's called push service.
Yes. Oh, push service, okay. I might have just missed that.
Yeah. I think it's spelled out more in the agreement that is in the RFP. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, well, okay.
I mean, in the RFP it alludes to, but in the agreement it actually spells out what they, what's needed to be done.
And I'll let you guys decide if some of that has to be aligned so that it's clear there's no issues there. And then I'm also concerned in the year one implementation for the waiver that we want to allow people to haul their own, and you're suggesting the 12-month receipt, and I don't think that's appropriate in year one, because I just don't think, that would start today in reality to a July implementation date, so I would like us to consider for the first year, can we do a six-month, and then thereafter they can prove, or...
Six months.
Right? I'm just saying, why don't we for year one, six months? Because by the time now, the notices, like you said, the public information can be spread and get out there to tell people to save their receipts. And so I'd like year one to just be a six-month.
Yeah, we'll definitely have to work on that to give some kind of period or something to adjust into it, yes.
Or maybe somebody can certify that they'll do it, and then if they don't, you can give them one of those notices that they're not taking their garbage or something. Um, let's see. Oh, the, and then I wanted the office in Carson City, and you said you would add that they have to have a Carson City office, so I wanted to make sure of that. We did the report, sorry, I'm just looking through all these to say, um, that's fine, that was fine, reports. We were gonna change the annualizing over the 10 years to match the contract term of 15, so that the rate would be spread appropriately, so the public can get that at a less. I didn't know if you already did that technical, so I'm sorry, just gonna put it on the record. We got brown goods. I'd like just a little more explanation. One of, on the master build community through the HOA, I have received a lot of complaints in the current methodology to make sure that they're not getting picked up as single-family residents for the mandatory, and yet they're paying through an HOA. So I get a lot of complaints from the Silver Oak area right now that they feel like they're being double-charged. So is there a contract monitor that we're gonna have in the city for any of those kind of disputes? Because I don't know that I saw that. So let's say a resident actually has a dispute. So I just, are we gonna, is it you, Rick?
It's me.
Okay. Again, I just kinda like it on the record that we do have to have someone in the city that can review and have somebody as a dispute resolution.
I think the way the agreement reads, I think it's called a contract administrator is what they refer to it as, but that'll be defined as me, yes.
Okay. I just want the public to know, though, just because the contractor might say it is so, that they really do have a recourse then through you to say that's not what that, right?
And that information will be, the information that gets pushed out to all the customers and the... in the initial rollout, that'll be included in that information.
Okay.
You know, Lori, on that one, just help me understand, you know, are you suggesting, I don't think you're suggesting that we get involved in the enforcement of private homeowners' association rules.
No, not at all. I'm saying that they think they're being double billed through the HOA, and then the actual residence is also being billed. That's, that's the issue. That the HOA is covering this area, and they have the master bins, and then the individual residence is also being charged.
As long as we're not getting into the, as long as we don't run down the rabbit hole of enforcing HOAs, private HOAs, I mean, I don't see any difficulty with the contract administrator who we're billing. But when it gets into a fight about whether or not the homeowners' association has a right to do that, I think, you know, that's not a bailiwick, that's not a city bailiwick. I mean, that's a private issue. But I'm okay with going down and trying it with the contract administrator and see how we go. But I'm a little concerned about going too far down that road.
No, I don't want to get in the HOA at all. I'm saying that the public is telling me they pay a fee to their HOA for garbage disposal. It's part of their fee, but they're also being charged by the vendor as a residential. And you can't, you don't pay it twice. That's the issue. I'm not going to touch an HOA at all. Right. And then, and then there's just some technical corrections in the audit area, some date corrections in section 10.3. I think that was it. Okay. I think I gave you a list full.
So my understanding of this provision, you can correct me if I'm not understanding this correctly, is that there's not an automatic escalator to the annual rate. It's by request of the vendor based on their cost of service. So they have to come to the city. There's not, there's not an automatic, it doesn't go up automatically by CPI. They have to come to the city and request an increase, and they have to provide the documentation. And then it's capped at a maximum of 5% per year. Is that correct?
It is a CPI-based escalator that annually, the service provider is able to implement the process, and they do not have to demonstrate any changes to their costs. It's based on if CPI goes up 3%, then the component, the service component, not the disposal separated out because the city controls the disposal, that component goes-
Right. But it has to be implemented by the vendor. It's not automatic.
Right. The vendor brings it forward. There's a deadline in the agreement where they have to fill out the paperwork, and then the city verifies that they did the math correctly.
So my point is that the 3% that would be the road impact fee, what my suggestion is, is that we make that an automated CPI increase. So if a vendor has stable costs and they don't bring forward an adjustment every year, I still want the 3% to go up by CPI because we're out there trying to fix roads, and we don't have anywhere near enough money. We have like 15% of the money we need to fix roads already. This is an impact fee by another name. We're going to call it a franchise fee. And I just want to make sure that we, and I think Darren would be happy to come up here and tell us that this is not an adequate amount of money already. So I just want to make sure that we take advantage of this while we're setting up the system to make sure that we're keeping up with inflation.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
We can add in there just to make sure it happens, but to date, there hasn't been a year to where they haven't come forward and asked for that adjustment to the fee. But we can add that in there just to make sure that it's, that it's included, yes.
And that was my understanding of what Brad had said earlier and my understanding and the reading of it. But at this juncture, having pondered all this, I'd like to go for 4% rather than 3%. I mean, the problem with our roads, Brad's already said adequately.
Hey, I want to agree with you, John. I really want to agree with you. But at the end of the day, it's still the ratepayers that are paying it.
This is inside the franchise fee. So they're going to-
It's part of the rate.
Well, I understand how the economic system works. I understand. But they said no, so I'm trying to find another way in terms of the ratepayers or the taxpayers.
And Chris, I just want to make sure that the animal proof containers for commercial operations is included in this.
Yes. Yes, we are addressing that.
All right. Other board comments before I open up the public? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? I don't know if it's appropriate for the providers to do it. Probably violate the, but you know, suit yourself. Anybody? Okay. Then Supervisor Monkowski, I mean, or somebody, why don't you try a motion, see where we go on these pretty good.
I move to authorize staff to proceed with the issuance of the request for proposals for solid waste and recyclable materials collection services and incorporate the discussion on the record today into the draft agreement, the final draft agreement, to include franchise residential and commercial service, mandatory residential service, automated trash, and single-stream recycling service, as well as additional options for yard waste services.
Second.
And by the discussion, you mean the six months as well, right? Six months on receipt when we start.
All of the comments that were read into the record today.
And the DA's office can inform at all.
Per our discussion here today, because there's too many, there's too many to list, and I don't want to miss one. So we have a record of the discussion. We can go back and reconcile the discussion and the notes that we read, plus the notes that were submitted by members of the board.
And I'm assuming that makes my request for 4% on the minority report.
Well, you can try an amendment to the motion and see where you go.
No, I won't. I won't do that. But I really do want to emphasize this.
I wouldn't give up so easy.
All right, well.
4%.
That's okay. All right. All right. Anybody else? Everybody clear on the motion? Dan,
you got it? You think it's okay? Everybody out there understand what we're doing? Okay. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Any abstentions? No. No noes. Okay. Unanimous. All right. We're moving right along, board. Let's now take up the city manager. This is to confirm the appointment of Sherri Russell to the position of controller. Do you want to add anything to what we already know?
Um, no, I'm good.
Sherri, you willing to take that on?
Just that now she'll always be known as the Dragon Lady.
That's a, that's a good name, though. Don't worry. I mean, because you know, that means there's a guard, and that's what it's all about, and you don't forget that.
Yes, yes. The Dragon Lady is willing to take it on.
All right. All right. We'll entertain a motion to appoint Sherri as position of controller.
Public comment?
Public comment. Anybody? Thanks. Okay. I didn't hear any. Who wants to make a motion?
I did.
Supervisor Bagwell.
I move to confirm the appointment of Sherri Russell to the position of controller pursuant to the Carson City Charter, section 3.073, effective tomorrow, June 22, 2018.
Get a good night's sleep.
Nancy's off the hook. Yeah. Thank you, and I hope I don't let you down.
We kid you, but I think we all know, you know, you got, you got the eagle eye too, man. So you just keep it going. That's all right. All right. Let's take up 19 Bravo. This is excess workers' compensation liability insurance. We do this yearly. Nancy, you going to do this, or who's doing it?
Yes, and Brandon Lewis is also here from-
Brandon, why don't you go, Brandon? Why don't you tell us what's going on here?
So this is just to continue the relationship with the workers' compensation excess liability insurance services with New York Marine and General Insurance Company for the next fiscal year. And there was a slight decrease of 1.65% for a total premium of $104,421.
Anything you want to add to that? You don't have to.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and supervisors. Just for the record, Brandon Lewis with USI Insurance. No, that covers that renewal pretty well, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Hang around. Public comment? Board? Something we've probably got to do. Want to make a motion, somebody?
I move to enter into an agreement for excess workers' compensation liability insurance services with New York Marine and General Insurance Company for a total premium of $104,421.
There's a motion, and a second on a motion. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Looks like it carried. Okay. Let's take up the next one. Brandon or Nancy, do you want to do? Brandon, you're there. Why don't you just tell us what's going on on 19 Charlie? This is Peb. Who wants to do it? Okay.
Hi. This one isn't as good of a picture, but this is to enter into insurance agreements for fiscal year 19 with all of our current carriers for a total premium of approximately $950,000. This is an 18.25% increase in the overall insurance program cost from the prior year. And the property program, that premium increased 31.8%. And this is a result of a 29% increase in the property values, and they did a 4% rate increase. And this also includes raising the policy limit up from $210 million up to $350 million to accommodate those increases in the property values. Our broker, Brandon, with USI Insurance Services, reached out to, you know, other companies, but none were able to offer us a lower quote. And then the casualty premium, that just reflects a 4.9% increase. And then a couple of the smaller premiums remain the same. And Brandon can probably answer any questions.
Brandon, I had a discussion with Nancy about this, but perhaps you can elaborate some more on the PIPIP insurance with regards to flood response and so forth. I know that was an issue, and, but if you can elaborate why we're back where we are.
Certainly, Supervisor Aboud. The PIPIP program that you're with, we did have a number of concerns shared, you know, by the city and our office with the claims handling and the adjustment for that claim from the January 2017 and February 2017 claims. We have addressed those specifically with the members of the PIPIP program. We have had numerous phone calls with them, telling them that the service was just unacceptable, the lack of response and delays on their part. And we know that the city was working, you know, with FEMA and trying to get information. And FEMA wants to know what the insurance is going to pay, of course, before they move forward. So we've made that very clear. We told them that, you know, it was unacceptable. And in the future, we've requested a different claims adjuster. To be honest with you, there's a small group of claims adjusters in the office. But going forward, we do anticipate having a different adjuster assigned. And our goal as your broker would just be to be just as involved with those claims. And I don't mind following up once or 100 times to make sure that they respond. So that's been made very clear to them, if that answers your question.
Can you follow up on that just before we go to Brad? Have we gotten any payments from insurance companies other than FEMA on any of the flood damage?
No, those claims in the end, you know, I think what was most frustrating with the delays that the adjuster caused was in the end, it was determined that most of the damage was to property that was not covered under the insurance. And that's typical for things like infrastructure, roads, pathways, things like that, since the types of property normally insured are more buildings and structures and fences and things like that. So no payment under those claims were made. They were ultimately closed without payment by the carrier.
So we had two of the most vicious events that we've had, flood events, and our insurance company is just kind of saying, you're not covered.
They did, they did a detailed review, and we were involved through that process of the spreadsheet showing all of the property that was damaged. And most of the property that was damaged was infrastructure, things like roads and pathways and culverts. And just quite honestly, those are not meant to be covered under insurance, and most entities don't intend to cover them because the risk of loss is pretty minor. But that was the ultimate conclusion, and it went back and forth between the city and the adjuster.
All right. All right. Brad, sorry.
But we still saw a premium increase?
Yes, I'd be happy to provide a little more insight on the market this year in terms of property rates and what we're seeing, if it might help.
Before we get to that, my question, Nancy, is the increase in property value, was that strictly appreciation, or is that appreciation and new construction?
I believe a lot of it was the new construction, and a big one was the wastewater treatment plant. Is that one of the big ones?
That's correct. If I may add, most of that, about 30% increase on the property was due to large increase on the values from the Water Recovery Resource Facility. The insurer actually paid for a formal appraisal this last year of that facility, and that appraisal resulted in an increase in values of $43 million. And I think a lot of that came from that $30 million project to update that facility over the last couple of years. So about $30 million of that makes sense from that point of view, and another 13 million was from the appraisal, just in terms of updating replacement costs for the facility as a whole. They also appraised several other buildings that increased some values, like the Sheriff's Admin Office, the Public Safety Complex, that contributed to. The total appraisal value increase was about $48 million in values insured by the city.
Did we look at the, their appraisal and see if there was an opportunity to dispute that, or if it was accurate? Because obviously, the premium's based on the value of the property. So if they're inflating the value and increasing the premium, typically, you know, we look at that. We'd run our own analysis to compare replacement costs plus land cost to make sure that our numbers would agree with their numbers. Do you know if we did that?
Yes. We, once we received it, we reviewed it, and we had our loss control manager review it, who has experience with appraisals. And then we sent it on to city staff through the Finance and Risk Management Office for approval. And once we received approval from the city, we informed the insurer to go ahead and use those updated values. So they were reviewed, yes.
So if we actually had an event, are you indicating that our insurance covers at full replacement value, not just the insured value? So it's full replacement?
Yeah, correct. In general, the property coverage provides coverage on the replacement value, the cost to repair or replace at the time of loss, yes.
Perhaps I'm speaking out of turn, and I'm not speaking for the board, but I would encourage us for, over the next year, go look for others, or is that just a waste of time?
I'd be happy to address that. Anticipating the market this year, back in December, we started having conversations with other insurance companies and programs to find out if any could provide a more competitive bid. And we have the privilege of working with a number of other Northern Nevada public entities, and we've done the same for them. So we submitted Carson City's property schedule to over 15 other insurance markets and programs to try to see if we can get a more competitive bid. Two quotes that we received, as city manager indicated, were higher. Your current liability carrier, Travelers, really did a good effort. They tried to quote. They could not provide the earthquake coverage we needed, and we went out to secondary markets to build a program to build comparable coverage, and the price was unfortunately higher than the renewal we received from the PIPIP program you're in. And I would note, if it's okay, the program that you're in is the public entity property insurance program that insures many thousands of public entities. It's the largest property placement in the world, so we do get the benefit of purchasing power there. And each year, that program, they go out and they market the renewal. And they have about 30 or 40 insurance carriers involved in the program. And if one carrier's not competitive, they'll replace it with another. So we have that built-in marketing feature every year. But we also did go out there, and unfortunately, no other markets were able to compete.
Well, one of the things that troubles me is what we heard about the nonresponsiveness. And in government, timing is timing, and you're better off if you're timely with FEMA or anyone else. So I hope that you can keep their feet to the fire so we don't experience that again if something occurred as we had in the last two, those two months.
Was there a change to our reserve requirement?
To the reserve requirement, Mayor?
To our reserve requirement, to the-
The deductible?
Oh, thank you. No, there were no changes in deductibles or retentions under these renewal programs.
All right. All right. Public comment? All right. Something we got to do, but it's not, you know, it's a little disheartening when we have these, when we have floods. And I, you know, I get you, the roads, but, you know, pathways that go through residential areas seems to me like, you know, we should have been able to, but that is what it is. I mean, I'm just more, you know, it just, it just strikes as odd that we have one of these big events like this. events like this. We spend a million dollars for insurance, and then we get told it's not covered. I mean, I get the business side of it, but it's difficult to, put it another way, it's difficult to swallow it away. All right, all right. Board members, go.
I move to enter into insurance agreements with Public Entity Property Insurance Program for property insurance, including automobile physical damage, at a total premium of approximately Travelers Indemnity Company for excess liability coverage at a total premium of $393,780. Great American for the government crime insurance at a total premium of $12,892. And with Illinois Union for landfill pollution legal liability insurance at a total premium of $12,518 for a grand total of approximately $950,979 for fiscal year 2019.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Any more hearing? None. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Carried. Okay, thanks, Brandon. You took the bullet for us, but that's all right. I know you're just doing your job.
Thank you.
You bet, you bet. All right. Let's take up city manager. Update on current projects, activities, and other items of interest?
All right, I'll try to go through this speedy. They're going to have the Howe Summit. It's the Housing Our Workforce Summit, and that will be held on July 25 from 11:30 to 1:30 at the Fandango Rum Jungle Buffet, and anyone can contact Mary J. Ostrander with Carson City Health and Human Services to reserve the seat, and they're recommending that property managers, realtors, investors, and landlords participate in this. And then July 25 to the 29th, we're going to have the Carson City Fair at the Fuji Park Fairgrounds, and you can check out the website for the latest information, and that's at carsoncitynevadafair dot visitcarsoncity dot com. I feel like I'm doing a commercial. All right, so another grant for Public Works. Great job, Public Works. They've been notified that their project, the Carson City Freeway Multi-Use Path from Colorado Street to Edmund Sports Complex for $1.6 million, has made the shortlist, and the construction, as long as we get the final award, is proposed to begin in the spring and summer of 2019. Onto community development. Let's see. So the building permit valuation for May is $7.3 million for a total year-to-date of $33.8 million. And then on the residential permits, in May, we issued 12 single-family detached and 12 multifamily permits for total residential permits issued, year-to-date of 103. The next few items are under zoning review. This is a special use permit to create an interactive outdoor space at the Children's Museum. And this is to, for an 11,407 square foot expansion to the Fremont Elementary School.
Ask a question on that one? Is the expansion to allow more classrooms or more programming space? Is that to expand the number of students that can actually go to the school? You have to get back to me.
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you on that.
We'll find out tonight.
But I'd like it before this afternoon's discussion.
I'll get back to you before then.
For the item, because that's where railroad is. So I'd like that answer.
Okay, yeah, I'll find out from Lee. And this is to add 12,500 square feet to Mark Twain Elementary School. And all three of these are scheduled to go to the Planning Commission on June 27. There's a building permit under review for tenant improvements for a new restaurant, The Martin, which is also in Winnemucca, and that would be on the first floor of this building. Parks and Recreation was, has been notified that they were awarded a land-water conservation grant for approximately $250,000 to help with the acquisition of the Hamm property that we've talked about a few times, and they're right now working with Nevada Land Trust on the land acquisition. And that will also come back to the board in September for final approval. And Health and Human Services, the city's revised food code was approved by the State Board of Health on June 8, and the Health Department staff will be working with businesses to update them on the changes to the code. They also wanted to note they had a medical surge drill, and it was conducted in Carson City in May, and that involved a long-term acute care hospital and a skilled nursing facility, and they have identified some areas for improvement, and the Quad County Public Health Preparedness Coalition will be addressing those areas.
I have an answer for you.
From Lee. Good job.
Fremont is a classroom expansion. It's expanding its capacity. And then Mark Twain, you haven't got, did you get? Mark Twain is a portable replacement. Portable replacement.
More capacity at Fremont, but just changing buildings.
At Mark Twain, yes, thank you. Thank you, Lee.
Shout out to Lee. So this is the IFC activity from May 9 to June 6. I won't go through every one of these, but they're mostly when departments come in and wish to fill their vacant positions, and we also approved the opening and recruitment for the public guardian position. Under, in the Capital Projects Fund from Undesignated, we approved the replacement of the copier at the Health Department, that their copier broke down. That was $10,000. And we also approved moving fiscal '18 CIP funds in the amount of $75,000 from the Edmunds Parking Lot Repair Project to the Public Safety Complex, and we added an additional $19,718 from the undesignated funds, and you saw that previously during the augmentations, so.
Perhaps I don't live in the real world, but $10,000 for a copier? What are we getting?
Yeah, they're copiers and printers, you know, they do the scanning. Unfortunately, they cost $10,000.
When you own them, they cost them.
Remember, your packet this week was this thick? That's what that's for, so. And that's all I had for this update.
Questions?
Nancy, on the total building permits issued, 12 single-family, 12 multifamily, the apartment complex down by Fandango, have they pulled any permits yet?
That will probably be another Lee question.
Yeah, you could follow up with that, because that's over 300 units. I suspect that, I mean, they're pushing, they're building the foundations, so they should be pretty close to pulling permits, and I'm just wondering, with 103 permits already pulled for this year, how many they intend to pull for the balance of the year and what impact that's going to have on other projects that people are trying to get permits for. And that's been my concern all along, is that these big apartment complexes, if we have a shade under 700 total permits for the year, and we have an apartment complex that's going to pull three or 350 permits, that can have a real impact on everybody else out in the market. So that's why, you know, again, in the past, I've asked that we have conversations with these developers, telling them that our expectation is that they're going to phase their construction over an extended period of time so that we have enough permits for everybody out in the market. So anyway, I'm just curious where they're at on that project, since it's actually vertical.
Yeah, I'll get with Lee, and I can send you an email and also update the board next time.
Those are, between, those are, that's good, some good comments. We need to keep an eye on that. All right, good move. All right. Public comment on anything that city manager said? Anybody? Nancy, anything further? You okay? All right, let's take up item 20, non-action item, board supervisors. Anybody got anything?
20 days away from Concert Under the Stars. Buy your tickets at carsoncitygreenhouse.org, please. We don't come to the board, the Greenhouse Project doesn't, for any funding, and to feed our in-needs population. These fundraisers are how we do it, so your support is appreciated.
Carson Water Subconservancy that Karen and I sit on, we just approved a contract to do a study to look into seasonal storage of water because of global warming, for whatever the reason global warming is happening. It is actually happening, which means that the runoff happens earlier in the year, and the impact of that is now that agricultural property owners are running out of water before the growing season is over. So the first surface storage facility on the Carson River is La Hotten, which is downstream from us. So what we're looking at is, looking in to see if there's an ability to build a storage facility and be able to get the water rights to store water there, where Douglas County and Carson City and Alpine County could take advantage of that, so that, we just signed the contract to do that study. This will be a multi-year process to go through this, but that's kind of what we're looking at to try to mitigate some of the effects of the snowpack, number one, being reduced each year, and what we do have is coming downstream faster.
So are they dusting off Watashima Dam?
No, we killed that back in the 80s.
Yeah, but it's the same theory.
No, no, no. This will be small...
Oh, okay.
Like 1,000 to 2,000 acre-foot facilities, not to store large quantities, but just to store enough, because that's all we could acquire water rights for anyway, with the price of water rates. So that's what we're looking at, is 1,000 to 2,000 acre-foot range.
John?
Airport open house is Saturday with our new manager, whom I think you've all met, and he suggests that he, if you're coming, come early, because it's going to be a hot day, and so they got a lot of things set up for the early part, and should be a nice time. I'll be there. We're working on that, yeah.
Anything else, Cory? Got anything? Navy Week. I think the LeapFrogs were trying yesterday. They were going to do a practice jump here, I think. Then they're going to jump the rodeo.
They did it at Mills Park.
Yeah, we told them, I met with Les Hubbard, who's, he's a civilian, but he's in charge of Navy Week, and I told him, I said, you know, you got a lot of veterans down here, man. Don't show it Alderino. So there's a lot of music down here. That's all right. It's good.
It was great.
All right, all right. Anything?
As a matter of fact, thank you to Glenn Eagles for supplying the food out at Silver Saddle Ranch for the veterans to enjoy Navy Week music. It was really delightful, and so, big shout out to Glenn Eagles for their contribution.
I'd like to add one thing. I know I took the BAC not to task, but put a little pressure on them today, but they are starting the 11 Amp Series on Saturday night, so after you go to the airport, come to the 11 Amp. 10 series, they do a great job on performances.
Anything else from the board? We ready to take a break until 1:30? All right, then unless there's an objection, we will be in recess until 1:30. Good morning.